Good evening, residents of Litchfield and welcome to the December 3rd, 2014 School Board Meeting. I'd like to start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. Stood by the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Revisions to the agenda?
I don't know, we have renewed business section D, job restrictions, and associated with first two policies. We don't have a full board here tonight. If you want to do that tonight, if you want to postpone for next...
Good idea to put it off till next week.
We could start the discussion on it. We don't have to vote, but we can review it and see if there's any information we'd want based on it, make sure it's where four of us will have some discussion on it rather than...
Okay. I thought she might want to be involved with it also, so...
I think she would want to be, yeah.
We can touch on it then. All right. Summary of non-public actions from November 19th, 2014. Mr. Barker made a motion to approve the non-public minutes of November 12th, 2014, as written, Mrs. Prindle's second. Motion carried 5-0-0. Presentations, recognitions?
No, but we're trying to enable the boys' football.
I was going to say, we need to recognize them.
So, Michelle called up today with Patterson and hopefully talked about how we can...
Then the question becomes, do we do a coaches and captains? And because by the time you get the whole team in here, you're not going to get it on camera. So, actually, I was wondering whether or not we should do a coaches and captains here and then try to coordinate with the high school sometime for a board member or two to be able to come and, you know, do a congratulations. So, we'll follow up on that. Does it sound agreeable to folks?
We have a football team in here, we just can't be in here at the same time. Correspondence? I believe I had any. The approval of draft minutes from 11:19?
Make a motion to approve.
How those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post 4-0-0. All right. Bring this community forum. Who wants to speak? Right through superintendent's comments?
We're bringing forward sometime later this month some preliminary indications of smarter balance results from the, I think, 22 states were involved in field testing this year. I know LMS did grade five math, I believe.
Grade five math, grade six reading.
Grade six reading. And so, those were used to sort of set anticipated benchmarks for the four achievement levels. And so, based on their projections, it's going to be as difficult to test as we had anticipated. So, I just want to, we'll be talking to the board about that, do some kind of expectation setting and how we're going to be looking at the data when we get it over next summer. And the next thing after that, probably in January, will be Dr. Dion, the principals are going to talk about the preparations that they have going forward in terms of not just smarter balance itself, but preparing kids to do well on the types of thinking and questions that smarter balance reflect. So, how are we pushing for that higher order thinking and how will we look at the data when it comes in, that sort of thing? So, other than that?
Excellent. So, we'll go right through principals' reports and we'll start with GMS. Mr. Thompson?
I have some more comments.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, your name?
I have a couple more comments.
I love that.
I had sent an email out to Brian Borg and Brian Cochran, Dr. Cochran, and since the administrators are here. This is something that we had started, worked on about two years ago, but sort of been wayside for a while, but I think it needs to start again. My email to them was, I'd like to see the school board and principals have a discussion about Common Core, Common Core testing and what needs to be done for our schools to set up our own testing program for classes where we do not have testing. So, that would be social studies, whatever class that we have that doesn't have a state testing program on it. And what I want to know is, is a child getting years' worth of learning in the elective classes or social studies or any other classes where they don't have to take a state exam? And also, from the business side, I'd like to know the cost for Litchfield in funding from federal or state if the school board decides or elects to have a conversation about pulling out of the Common Core testing program, what the repercussions on that. You know, a couple of years ago, that was very on the forefront as we were moving to the Common Core, trying to determine how we were going to be able to be able to judge our students, whether they were getting a year's worth of education. And, you know, presently, we're able to judge about 30% of our teachers in that process because we do get some results in Common Core and over a period of time, you can see trends and things like that to see whether the students are actually getting a full year of education. And, but it needs to be something that is judged across all of our classes. And I think at the present time, I don't really think that that's something that's available to us. And if that is something that needs to occur, then I believe it needs to occur, beginning with the principals and the superintendent determining that direction, or may even need to start with the board deciding that that's a direction we want to see them go with. You know, we're tasked with coming up with a budget, coming up with policies and procedures and things that could better the educational process. And we haven't done that for about two years ago. We've spent a lot of time on a lot of things that didn't work on improving any education for the kids for the last two years. And the board needs to set an agenda over the next 60 days, I believe. It needs to be an agenda that is bought in by this board. It needs to be an agenda after the next election that is going to be carried forward by whoever that chair is, with whatever new ideas may come from new board members or more members who are reelected. But we need to get back to improving the educational process in all the schools and in all the classes. And Brian responded back that he didn't think this was, start of the conversation was today. He wanted a month of December and also wanted Julie to be here. And, but that's fine, I agreed with that, but I think you need to understand the board needs to have that discussion. So, I'm asking that that become an agenda item in our next two meetings so that we can begin to lay a foundation for the administrators to know where the board would like it to go. The next subject was Salem District is so frustrated with feeding their high school students that they fired the federal government from their child program. They have refused the dollars beginning for the rest of this year. They do about 480 lunches a day. They now need to do about 685 lunches a day to break even with the money they have lost. But they want to put food that the kids are eating on the plates, not food that's getting thrown away. And so, my question to the administration is, what is the cost for Litchfield? If we elect to do the same thing to change the menus, they're just doing it at the high school, they're not doing it at the elementary or middle school. But that should be another thing that we should begin to take a look at. Michael Delahunti is the superintendent there and they spent, you know, 30 days analyzing it. They feel that with better food, they'll make up the money without any problems. They had less than 50% of their kids eating in the cafeteria. So, they feel that if they provide food that kids eat in high school, kids will eat it and they'll make up that money and it'll be a break even proposition. So, I would challenge the high school and administration in general to look at that process and maybe bring something back to the board before the end of the year. So, if that's something that we want to make a change, we can go into January when the kids come back from school with a revamped lunch, maybe. Dr. Cochran, you can reach out to Superintendent Delahunti in Salem to get some information from them, but it's, the lunch programs and the food is not conducive to, you know, high school at least, not to what the kids want, so...
Do they talk about what type of foods, John, they would bring, introduce?
I imagine pizzas and french fries are coming back pretty quick, you know?
They have pizzas in high school, that's why I'm just curious, like, what are the foods?
Well, if they do, you know, they don't, I mean, you know, Manchester just found, just to do their pizzas, they went from $5 to $6.75 to meet the whole wheat, you know, requirement on that. So, I don't know what all the different foods are that they brought back out, but that may be something of conversation with Salem High School and the staff's talking about that. I imagine they'll be receptive to sharing that information. I mean, there was a couple of articles in the newspapers about it and stuff like that. So, I think that...
I just wanted, because I know my daughter seems to enjoy the food here in the high school, so Lori or Frank, do you have any idea, like, how many kids eat the lunch?
Well, yesterday, it's kind of amazing because I was just talking to Hilda about this because we decided that a lot of food was being thrown away, so we started collecting the food that was being thrown away so we could take it to a pig farm. And yesterday, 47 pounds of food was thrown away. And, you know, so kids are taking a bite, they're not eating the fruit, but they have to take a fruit, I mean, you know, it's good food, I mean, the fruit is a good thing. They have to take a fruit to count as a lunch and then they're just throwing it away. And so, we've been talking for a while about maybe saving the fruit and having Lin Nagy make pies for the homeless. Like, you know, it just kills us to see all that food getting thrown, but, you know, that's what happened yesterday. So, I was just saying to Hilda, what would it cost if we just got out of the lunch program? Because it doesn't, so it's just ironic that you just said that.
But how many kids are eating hot lunch? That's what I'm asking.
How many? I don't know how many are eating hot lunch. A lot. I mean, we'd have to ask...
I'm just curious about the numbers, because that's what John's saying.
I can tell you globally, our entree sales are up as high as they've been, as Hilda tells me, over the past five years.
Really? Because I know what you're saying, if I was throwing away food, but I think in my family, I have four kids. Put the same food in front of all four of them, they're not all eating the same food, so they end up throwing...
Under the federal guidelines, we are required to have every student that passes through the cashier to have a veggie or fruit.
Yep.
And the kids are just going right to the trash and throwing it out. But if that's not, if we were audited and they find that they're not taking those selections, then we would not be eligible. But again, I remind the board, last year, had it not been for two events, the having to replace the POS system here at Campbell High School and also to replace the steamer, which was a total cost of almost $30,000, we would have been well in the black last year in food service program here in the district. So, I would just caution, I think it's worth taking a look at. I'm not sure how Salem did it because quite frankly, if they opted out only at the high school, not the other schools, they still come under the federal guidelines. So, I don't know how, as a district, because you join as a district, not as an individual school. So, we'll certainly take a look at it and see if the summit, but as far as the throwaways, the entree sales are up as high as they've ever been, from my understanding with Hilda and the numbers are bearing it out, the actual counts, we can get you some information on that as well.
At the director's meeting this week, she actually indicated how pleased she was, especially at the high school in terms of the entree sales, so...
Yep.
But I agree with Frank, we should take a look at it.
Take a peek. Thank you. Anyone else? Now, we'll move on to principals' reports and we'll start with Mr. Thompson, GMS.
Oh, lady. I apologize, I left out something important and I realized that this afternoon because we were doing something with smarter balance. But the first thing, I'm just going to do some highlights, I'm not going to read my entire report that was sent to you, and I know you can do that. But the important thing I left out is that on November 4th, our teachers spent the day working on performance assessments. So, we began the day with cross-discipline teams and they did a validation protocol for the work that had been done to date on the assessments, meaning that they have a rubric by which they judge whether it's meeting the standards. And so, they were looking at performance assessments they had not actually seen before because it was a different grade level team or something like that. And then, after that, they got to work collaboratively within their own team or some people, like the library media specialist, didn't actually have a team, so they worked individually. All of the PE teachers from the district, however, came over and they worked together, that kind of thing. I just wanted to give an update, it's been a while since we were here, so I had to go back, but we did have the educational specialist, the consultant from McGraw-Hill, come and meet with our second grade team on October 24th to work on the textbook pilot for the new networks, social studies program. There was still some issues of getting online access, which is an important part of it, but Julie's trying to work through that with the sales rep. The reading department will be having a short assembly on December 12th for Fisher-Cat's reading incentive program. We just put those on the counter for students who would be interested in participating and we don't know, because they don't tell us how many, but we believe quite a few are. We are going to be doing our math and reading night, as we've done in the past two years, and we have set the date for March 12th. We toyed with the idea of switching it to a technology night, we thought that would be an interesting way to mix it up. But there are enough classrooms that have fairly limited technology, we thought best to wait another year. We have requested additional smart boards, as I'm aware, I'm sure you're aware, and plus we have the new lab, we thought it would be great to kind of feature that. So, for next year, we hope to focus on technology as a tool for teaching and learning. I just want to mention the Veterans Day Recognition Assembly, that was on Monday, November 10th. The third graders made posters, all of the students participated in singing, and the fourth graders wore readers on a PowerPoint that was describing and telling the history of the five branches of the military. We had a great turnout and a wonderful adult team who worked together to get that ready. I just wanted to acknowledge the PTO for providing meals both evening on Thursday, the 13th, and then the next day, helping with lunch for teachers in parent-teacher conferences. I'd also like to acknowledge the Lions Club. Every year, they come in a series of volunteers and it takes about five to seven days, I think, for them to do vision screenings for all students. That's a really important service to our school and community. The Litchfield Fire Department came in on the 27th through 9th of October and did fire prevention assemblies for all students in grades K through four. I'm just going to quickly mention that we have had our backboard replaced in the gym. I'm really grateful to the rec league. It was during one of their games, it was broken and it was replaced the Wednesday before Thanksgiving with actually a matching backboard from Talent Hall. Plus, we have a spare because they took down two. Our students participated, the student council, in collecting food for Make a Difference Week, and this year, we collected 910 items, which is up significantly from last year. I don't know where that is in the standings, but I think we'll hear shortly, so anyhow, it was a 50% increase over 2012, I mean, 13. The chorus concert is coming up next Tuesday, we have a snow date set for Wednesday. The Litchfield Rec Department basketball begins this week. I did send out a parent message today related to the delayed opening next week and just to mention that we've come up with different ways of fitting in specials on a delayed opening and settled on a new way, which I alerted parents to, and that is that we will have every scheduled special on a delayed opening, but we're going to just reduce the length of time that each class meets. That's important because if kids are scheduled for PE or library, they have to bring in equipment or their books. Just another couple of quick things. DI is up and running, it started Tuesday of this week. We have seven teams and I believe the count is somewhere around 65 students. There are four rising stars teams and there are three competitive teams, and they started Tuesday of this week. The scarecrow jamboree back on October 31st was a huge success. We had 127 students from third and fourth grade, which is well more than half of all of the student body, participated. 55 third graders and 72 of the fourth graders, there were 87 scarecrows, and then prizes were awarded. So, thank you to all of the students and parents who helped with that. I did want to mention that we lost power Thanksgiving Day or the night before and Dave Ross was quick to get there, called public service and got everything restored by the next morning. And the last thing is that we had our annual book fair in the weeks leading up to Thanksgiving and again, thanks to the PTO who gives money so every kindergarten student can buy a book, which they did. So, that's it.
Thank you.
If I had known Dave Ross was able to get power restored today, I would have asked him to come on up to Ware.
Next time, man, tell him to make that call for all of Litchfield.
He said, because we're a school, we're especially blessed.
Uh-huh. He must have used a special sprinkle dust.
Speaking of, just elaborating on that, was the consideration used since over 50% of the town was out to open Campbell High School for a shelter?
No, we would never contact it.
It's not anybody's contact, it's superintendent, business manager's job to open the school.
Nope.
Yep?
No, I'm not denying, I'm not saying no. Answering the question, no, we didn't have hot water until sometime mid-Saturday afternoon.
You'd have heat.
We didn't have heat.
That's what the generator's for.
So, the answer to your question, no, we did not open the school.
Okay, then, as a school board, I would like to ask that the administration figure out the process that we use in the past that Dr. Cutler may have used with the town, because I think there's conversations with the town about doing that. We had 50% loss of power for 48 hours or more for some and didn't get it back till Saturday or Sunday morning before all of Litchfield came off. That's a long time ago in the cold.
Was there a criteria you used, John, in the past, do you know?
Well, normally, if it was going to be two or three days, I mean, we normally opened up the second day. So, Friday, we probably would have been opened.
Would they open a gym?
They open up the cafeteria in the gym and they talk with some of the various groups, the women's club, the Lions Club, various groups are equipped with their organizations to put together meals, they put together hot meals in the evening so people can come and have a hot meal and if we have hot water, I guess, have a hot shower. But if not, because I guess in some instances, the power was out by six or seven o'clock Wednesday night.
Right.
And in some of the town, and didn't come back again until Friday or Saturday. And so, I was surprised that we didn't get a call from the town on that, but we may want to have a plan in place. But I think for most cases, I think Dr. Cutler sort of opened up the school and, you know, it's Campbell first. And for whatever reason, Campbell can be opened, the generator can be moved by the fire department and hooked up at LMS because we put the connection at both those schools.
I think the reasoning for it too was to use it as an emergency shelter.
Yes. So, it, you know, that should have been the case, you know, because we, you know, you'd never know, I mean, not going to open it for one day power outage, but, you know, they were pretty much saying that it could be a two or three day thing, so...
It's not like the right thing to do.
We'll pick up the protocol and get in touch with the folks at the town.
Yeah. I mean, the other process of no power, no phone, but, I mean, we, I know that they used the phone system so that, you know, with going out to people's phones and stuff and the town would be getting, using whatever processes they could to let people know that the school was opening, what time it was opening. And it never was open 24 hours, even when we had the ice storm, I think by 10 or so, as the last people left, they would lock up and, but they would open back up 9:30, 10 o'clock in the morning so that people were getting out of their house and coming to where it was opening.
Thank you. All right. We'll go to Mr. Leclader at LMS.
Thank you. You're going to hear a lot of similarities between Scott and my report. Start with some acknowledgements. We also had a Veterans Day ceremony and it's become a tradition, annual tradition now, not only a ceremony, but breakfast beforehand for the veterans. We had a good turnout, a lot of our students' grandparents came and it was a nice event. Our UA team put on the breakfast. We had a couple of student readers, we had a big essay contest in the school and a couple of student readers, Olivia Carlson and Jessica Grant read. We also had a parent who, I know we're on a tight schedule tonight, so I won't read the note, but I got a nice note from the guest speaker and then also from a veteran that was there, actually father of one of our students. So, a nice event, went real well. We've had a lot of events over the last couple of months. One was the drama club performance just before break, Thanksgiving break, and Corey Selsin, Melissa Mason, our advisors, did a great job working with the kids, kids put on a real nice play that week before the Thanksgiving break. And a real good turnout, we had two nights and good turnouts both nights for the performance. Also, the PTO, the LMS PTO has been very busy this fall, they had a very successful fundraiser this fall and then provided dinner and lunch during our parent conferences. Parent conferences were back, of course, early November and it's kind of like Ticketmaster getting into, to get a parent conference, we do signups online and there's limited slots, but we filled our slots very quickly and we're, we don't deny any parent that wants to have a conference, but we're in an overflow mode now. So, they went real well and scheduling went real well and thank you to the PTO for providing meals both days. There were some leftovers too, which we got to enjoy in the office. Student council food drive, I believe, Scott, if you were at 9:10, I think we're at 9:11. We still have a pie on the back, I'll wait and see what Lori's told us.
I'm getting small varmin noodles.
On that, but we had a lot of, we had a lot of support around that and a lot of donations, so thank you to everyone who contributed to that. Our Lego Robotics team is now in their third year, Patty Wagner was our volunteer coach again this season, did a nice job. They had their regional competition in Lunandary, it's very competitive, they did a, they did a good job, they did not qualify for the states, but again, there's a lot of teams there and a few that actually qualify to the next round, but she did a nice job. We also had high school kids volunteering, as they did last year, to help with that. So, thank you to all of them and to the group of students who did a great job all season. They've always got, they always get recognized for sportsmanship and teamwork, so they did a good job with that again this year. I'm not going to hit everything here. Curriculum and instruction, so we had our late arrival day in early November and we've really laser focused our professional development as Julie had done a lot of work with teachers over the summer on UBD design, what that looks like. We've been talking about performance assessments in our school for a couple of years now, so that's nothing new. But now, really refining that focus to a consistent framework, no matter what the content area, the teacher, it'll end up looking similar. And so, that work continued on the late arrival day and all of our teachers now have And so, that work continued on the late arrival day, and all of our teachers now have at least a draft unit completed, and that work will continue at our next late arrival day here in a week. Smarter Balance is coming, as you know. We're very excited. It's coming in May. We are working out, still working out details as we get them from the state around what the requirements are, timeframes and things there, but getting more of a focus around the timeline of that. And we'll be doing some practice tests as we get on in late winter, just to, again, familiarize the students. It's as much a familiarity with the types of questions, but really, as I said, we've been doing a lot of work around performance assessments and this type of, this type of work for a while, but it's that interface on the computers that students need some, at least some awareness of when they go into the test. And last year, having done the field test, I think that was probably the biggest thing that we looked and said, okay, we really need to make sure students, and they're very quick, because nowadays are real quick with this stuff, but making sure they're aware of how all of that works together. We're doing a book study this year on a book called Grading Smarter, Not Harder. And one of the, one of the things that I think each building's working on, but we're focusing on this year is standard-based grading at the middle school. We're looking at our report card. Our leadership team is looking at ways that we can better communicate student learning to parents and to students, rather than just a traditional letter grade, using more of a standard-based approach. Parents, they don't always only see a B on the report card, but they see a little more in terms of their math skills, their reading skills, and so forth through the content areas. So, that book really focuses on that and making that transition. Okay, the next item under Curriculum and Instruction is the master schedule. Dr. Kaufman, should I cover this now? Well, it's part of the report now?
Sure.
So, one of the attachments from Ms. Flynn in your email was the master schedules. Does anyone need a copy of this? I have.
They have it on there.
Okay. I know there's been discussion about the hours, the instructional hours, and what that looks like at the middle school, and what that looks like at Campbell and GMS, and how that specifically relates to our school. I'll make a few assumptions that you're aware of what the minimum standards are for hours, and then if you have questions, as I go along. So, I'm on the side with the little matrix here. And when you look at the district and you look at each building, the state has different requirements for elementary level versus secondary level. Elementary level is up to grade, up through grade six, and then secondary is seven through 12 by the state definition. The minimum hours for elementary is 9:45. The minimum for the state, for the secondary is 9:90. So, our fifth and sixth grade is, has more time to give, if you will, than our secondary grades, which are seventh and eighth grade. And so, the task was to get our leadership team together, look at our schedule, look at our instructional hours, try to increase our instructional hours within our current school day, and then what other tweaks can we make to bring us up to sort of a higher margin between that minimum and where we're at. And if you look at that right column, the far right column where it says remaining days, you can see that currently grades five and six have 9.7 days remaining after a full school year of 180, 80 school days. Currently, grades seven and eight only have 1.6 days in excess of the minimum. So, again, our task was to bring that number up. And I could go through all the nitty-gritty on the math calculations, minutes, hours, and so forth. If you have questions about that, I can go over that. But really, getting to the bottom line here, if we increase, we're trying to hit a sweet spot because elementary, there's a max that we can't exceed, 5.7, 5.75 hours. So, we can't exceed that, yet we need to bring our minimum up. And so, finding that sweet spot. So, what we did, just the bottom line, and it's listed out at the bottom below the, below the chart there, we added 10 minutes of instructional time to all four grades to start. So, grades five through eight, 10 minutes. In addition to that, for grades seven and eight, we added three more minutes. So, for grades seven and eight, the total additional instructional minutes was 13. And I can show you really, on the other side, I can show you what that looks like on our schedule and our, we don't have bells, but on our class schedule. But if you look at the bottom, the bullets there, for grades seven and eight, so A through, if you're familiar with our schedules, makes a little more sense, but A through E periods are now 47 minutes. F and G periods would now be 49 minutes. And lunch would be, for seventh and eighth graders, would be reduced. This is where we get that, those extra three minutes for seventh and eighth grade. Lunch is reduced from 30 minutes for the students down to 27 minutes.
What were the lengths of the periods?
Lunches are 30. Yeah. 30 minutes.
So, no, what were the length of the periods?
45.
Both were 45?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. So, on the other side, you can see, and you don't have the current schedule in front of you, but you have the proposed schedule. You can see now, the minutes right now currently are pretty square, like 7:45 to 8:30, 8:30 to 9:15. So, now it gets a little bit, little bit off, which is pretty typical of a schedule.
How does a student go from one class at 8:24 to another class at 8:24?
Yeah, so, there's, that's a good question, John. We don't build transition time into our schedule. We take a total 15 minutes a day for transition time. Kids are, kids are located in a, pretty much a pot area, okay? There's a lot of, a lot of internal door traveling, and so there's just not a lot of time needed for travel. The biggest time is probably around lunchtime.
Right.
So, we take a sum total of 15 minutes, which is an average of about two minutes per, per, per class, okay? And that's just sort of totaled into the day, but it's not on our class bell schedule here.
So, you have six hours and 37 minutes if I look at an eighth grade class from 7:30 to 2:07. That would be six hours and 37 minutes total.
Yep.
And you have 27 minutes for lunch, which is six hours and 10 minutes. And you take 15 minutes for passing classes, puts you at five hours and 55 minutes.
The way we figure it is, take seven classes, if you take what we currently do, seven classes, 45 minutes, plus 30 minutes of enrichment time.
I'm taking, a kid arrives at school at 7:30.
Yeah.
He's out of school at 2:07.
Yeah.
That is six hours and 37 minutes.
Right.
27 minutes, using the eighth graders, 27 minutes for lunch is six hours and 10 minutes. Seven minutes to get, not to be tardy, is six minutes and three minutes. And then 15 minutes passing in the hallway puts you well under the six hours that you need for each of those classes. So, I don't know how you're gaining time.
It's actually six hours per day. 300 instructional minutes is a maximum allowed under the regulations. They have to be at, if you look at the calculations, they're at 3:48. And when I went through them and, when I did the calculations, the way that the folks at the middle school did, they actually worked in terms of going up from the instructional time. So, if you look at the second group, the proposed 5-6, that 3:45 is actually five hours and 45 minutes, which is to the minimum, the maximum that's allowable. The high school actually has 3:60 a day, which is the maximum that's allowable. So, at 3:48 a day, that's 12 minutes a day under the maximum. But it's halfway between the maximum and where they were. So, by my math, I got the same, exact same calculation that they did.
Okay.
It's an increase of 13 minutes.
I understand there's new math, but how much is, how much time is from 7:30 to 2:07? Am I missing something in the math numbers there?
It's six and a half hours.
So, six hours and 37 minutes. The half, seventh and eighth graders have to be in class for six hours a day. Using what Tom just told us, they're not in class for six hours. They're in class for five hours and 48 minutes.
The max is six. The minimum is, is...
But we need to get them in class longer because...
This is 13 more minutes a day.
What this does, at the end of, if you look at the last column on the spreadsheet, on the little chart there, on the right side, when you add up all the instructional minutes, you divide it, you get the hours, you end up with 8.27. You go from 1.6 days to 8.27 days over the course of a full school year. So, you gain about...
If I just use this master schedule, this new, this new final master schedule.
Yep.
And you use five hours and 48 minutes of instructional time, which is what your schedule has there, that's 986 hours over 180 days. That's not getting us where, we're there, we're there now. I don't, I don't know what, I don't know what changed in the schedule.
Because the classes are longer. If you go, go to the bullet under the chart, okay? Currently, each class is 45 minutes. Now, each class goes up to 47 minutes. Last period of the day becomes 51 minutes. So, instead of 45-minute periods, the periods are longer. There's more minutes in a, in a class period.
I, I, Tom, I'm not arguing that.
I know, John, same. Where did you get the, where'd you get the minutes increased?
Oh, oh, I, okay.
No, you got two at the beginning, you got two at the end, and three from lunch. It's only seven.
Okay, I understand your question. So, at the beginning of the day right now, kids enter the school at 7:35. 7:37 is our tardy bell right now.
Okay.
All right? Then they go to, so they're in homeroom by 7:37. So, they have eight minutes from 7:37, 7:45, where they're in homeroom, which is when they do the pledge, we do the pledge of allegiance, we do announcements, we take attendance. Eight minutes is way more time than we need. So, we've taken that, right now, homeroom ends at 7:47. Homeroom is now going to begin at 7:35. So, instead of parents having, if they're dropping their kids off, having them there at 7:37, they're going to have to have them there at 7:35. 7:35. We are, we are condensing our homeroom down to two minutes. Two-minute homeroom, so it goes from seven...
I understand all that. I understand what you're...
But that's where we're gaining the time though.
I am, I am looking at your master schedule, and I am backing out the times that you just gave me.
But start at the beginning, John. Start at the beginning. 7:37. See where eight periods start at 7:37? Right now, it starts at 7:45, so that's eight minutes.
I, I, that's even worse, because that's, it's the issue that's causing the seventh and eighth graders not to have enough instructional time for us to be able to keep them in the classroom the way the board would like to keep them. So, I understand that you've worked on the schedule and you've changed the schedule.
Added time to the classes.
But it's not reflecting in more time for the students. Because, again, 7:30, it's not. It's 7:30 to 2:07 is six hours and 37 minutes long. Remove the lunchtime, now you're down to six hours and 10 minutes. Five minutes of that is to get in from 7:30 to 7:35, so now you're down to six hours and five minutes. And then you have 15 minutes of moving from classroom to classroom that you said is a factor that you take out, which is, you're not allowed to use that time as, as part of your instructional per the RSA. So, you're down to five hours and 50 minutes. And five hours and 50 minutes times 180 days is around 990 hours.
I think what it comes, I think what it is, John, is there is more instructional time right now, but it only still brings us to the minimum because you were below the minimum before.
No, we're at the, we're 15 hours over the minimum before. Right now, that, the total number of instructional hours goes up by 13 minutes a day times 180 days.
I, I, I'm going to beg to differ with you, Dr. Kaufman.
Okay.
Unless you have a math, and I will be glad to turn my head and have you show me on this board, the math that gets you to more hours. You're at 990 hours within your schedule.
When you, I guess my question, John, when you say more hours, do you mean more hours in the building or more hours in instruction?
I, I'm using, if they're in the building for six hours and 37 minutes.
Yep.
Six hours of that has to be instructional.
No, that's not true.
Doesn't have to be.
That's, that's the legal...
Okay, what's the number that seventh and eighth graders have to get to?
990.
Okay, instructional. Instructional hours.
Yeah.
That's what you're at.
Before this, they were at 1,005.
We're accessing the 990 now.
There's the board, and show me.
But, but, John, do you have this? Because this has...
I do. I have everything you're having, but just go to your master schedule and back out your time.
I did the math on Excel right here. If I start at 7:37, real classes start at 7:37.
Instead of 7:45.
They go to 2:07. That's exactly six and a half hours. Back out the 27 minutes for lunch, back out the 15 minutes for passing, it comes to five hours and 48 minutes.
I can show you.
Multiply that by 180, gives you 62,640 minutes, which is 1,044 hours.
I can show you the, I mean, if you want me to do it on there, I can show you.
Well, then the numbers on the chart are wrong. Because he's showing before was 990, current's 990, then afterwards is 990.
That's hours required.
No, hours required, I'm sorry.
There's three places.
1,005, 1,044.
There's three places that have been impacted. One is how we do business at the beginning of the day. We've condensed what we feel was too much time in homeroom, too much time at the beginning of the day, not in instructional time, but in homeroom and then just going to lockers and things like that. So, we've taken time off of that 15 minutes from when the kids walk in the door to when they go to first period. It was 15, now it's seven. So, that buys us eight minutes. That's the first place. The second place is lunch. We've taken three minutes from lunch. The third place is we've added two minutes to the end of the day. So, those three, if you take those three elements, you add them together for seventh and eighth grade, you get 13 minutes. And that's where you get...
So, what's a minimum instructional time?
I apologize. I had the wrong math because I was using 5.48, and I should have been using 5.8. So, I am correct, I figured it out. So, they will be at 1,044 hours. For a full year.
For a full year. Yeah, and that's why, if you look at the last column on the...
They're getting under six. So, I'm asking what the minimum is that they, is required.
It has to be 99.
99 a year.
No, that's total, but I'm saying per day. Is there, what's the minimum per day?
The minimum per day for seventh and eighth grade?
I thought it was six hours.
No, that's not the minimum.
If it was...
If it's a maximum, actually.
It is. 5.75 is, yeah, I don't know what the minimum is.
Actually, I don't know if there's a minimum per day, a minimum of five per day. Just, I think it's just hours based on what the...
No, there's still...
I think it's five and a half to six hours. The five and a half hours a day times 180 days would give you your 990. So, they've added, you know...
13 minutes.
13 minutes, 13 minutes a day. So, they're just barely over the 5.5.
Here's the next piece of the discussion, is, when you look at the remaining days, so now we're talking about this current school year because we're in December, and, you know, we're not, we're not talking about 180 days scheduled. So, remaining days right now is 8.27. So, if we were to, let's say we started this halfway through the year, that would give us half of that for this, for this year.
All right. Oh, you could pass that around.
And if we started...
That's in the board packet. If you started, actually, if you started next Monday, it would round up to six additional days, but I think that's a little short for notice. If you started Jan, January 1st, it would be 5.5 additional days. Because there's a, what is it there, 106 days after Christmas break, and only 74 instructional days before.
Yeah, we have one late arrival in the second half.
So, the days difference would be five and a half days. So, and this, this, the seven, eight group would be the group with the least additional time, as the chart shows. So, that would mean that if you had four additional days in the calendar, you would have another five and a half days of hours already in the bank before that. So, you'd have to, you'd have to lose...
Gives us seven days to get to that Friday. That, we, school ends on that Wednesday, so it gives us basically, for all intents and purposes, we're only really worried about LMS because GMS and CHS are, you know, we would, would be in trouble when schools were closed for long enough that those two schools were threatened with time.
Yeah, and our fifth and sixth grader are, as you know, it's the seventh and eighth grade that's really the, the issue, so.
Yeah. That gives a fair amount of flexibility, but it's a truly odd year when, well, even this year, we would have nine days, the four built into the calendar, all right? But as we use those days, it's because we've taken storm days. So, when we get to 184th day of the calendar, the maximum instructional days would still only be 180. Pelham would use the hours last year... Pelham would use the hours last year at the end of the year, and what they did was they used up their four days, four additional days, but they'd had five cancellation days. So what they did was they had the students come only one hundred and eighty days and added an extra day on the school year for teachers as a professional development day, which would then put them consistent with the contract at the one eighty-six or whatever they're at. So, for example, you end up with, with fewer than a hundred and eighty instructional days, but still, even at that, much more time than is required. So this actually, if, if you work that model and used your four days built into the calendar first, then you would have, the lowest hurdle would be another five days before you would actually need to add time. So it would be nine days. And if it were the whole year, as you look in the chart, it would be eight point seven plus four years. So you'd need to miss more than twelve days before you'd have to go past the, the four-day extension. So it gives, it would give us a tremendous amount of flexibility in terms of time.
That was fun.
Anything else on that?
Oh, it keeps us away from lizard bags, so I'm all for it.
That discussion's next week, I believe, right?
Solve that problem today.
I don't think it's going to snow this way.
We would have, we would have to use two.
Only on Saturdays and Sundays.
I did want to say, I thank, I want to thank Principal Leclaire and Assistant Principal Fair and the building leadership team. We, you, the three of us had a quick conversation about the requirements. You know, some, some, you guys expressed how you're going to go about it, and I know when the group was meeting, I popped in to say hello and thanked them for their time and their work, but they met as a building leadership team. And I think in cases like this, when the group that has to make it work at the building level has the ability to have the input and design the solution, in my experience, is the best way to go. In this case, a four-grade level middle school with unified arts and only one music teacher, it's really constraining on the schedule. So to have somebody on the outside saying, in theory, this works is nice, but to be able to take the leadership group and have the teachers themselves, including the unified arts teachers, sit down and, and, you know, work a, a solution that I, I think, you know, pretty much meets our, our needs was greatly appreciated. So, thank you.
So, um, did you want to move that, make that change? Do you need our vote from us?
Procedurally, we, the board would have to approve it. We should probably have some conversation with the LEA about the order. What's in there now, basically, I think we could, we could get by, because what it says in the contract is the first option is to extend the school year, which would be the four days. The option of using hours would just kind of cut across all of those other things and be inserted in there. What do you mean by that, Nate? The first option to make up for lost school days is the use of the four additional days built into the calendar. So I, I don't think we'd be technically in violation of the contract, but I think it would be good to have a dialogue with the union to make sure that we're, you know, in agreement with how it would roll out.
Sure, that part's fine, but by modifying the schedule and changing the amount of hours that you teach a day, do we have to negotiate that, or?
Uh, well, we would have to. It's negotiable if the start and end time is beyond the seven point five. I'm not sure the changing of the day in between the instructional time, because it's written in the, in two different parts in the contract, which is why I think we need to meet. I think, I think it's clear that extending the, the teacher day beyond seven hours and fifteen minutes is a negotiated item. But I'm not sure that the, the extension of instructional time within that seven fifteen is a negotiated clause or not. Either way, I think it's in the best interest of everybody, including teachers, so I don't see it as being problematic. But I think it's, it's best to have those conversations first.
And we get several weeks before we want to implement it?
I'm sorry?
I said, you have several weeks before it's going to be implemented, January first, so.
Yes, I'd like to take a look at that also, the.
And Mr. Cooper and I talked yesterday or this morning about setting up a time to, to, to meet about this and a few other things.
Oh, you have two weeks to decide, not a doubt, so the board can decide, why the seven thing?
I think that's two.
And not await till the second week, if the fourth week of January.
Yeah.
Just a couple other quick things on the report. We, I've talked a little bit about our math counts team. Mr. Blow, parent of a student of ours in, in our school, is the coach this year, and I could spend a half hour talking about some of the stuff they're working on, I won't, but. Um, it's amazing, some of the stuff that they're doing. If you have a chance to, and I'll, I don't have the date with me, but they, they do have some, as you'll see in the report, some competitions coming up. If you have an opportunity, this year, the, the national competition's actually be, going to be in Boston this year. So it's going to be interesting, and we'll see how we do regionally before we get to that point, but, um, it's amazing the stuff they're working on. So thank you to Mr. Blow and our, our team. It's a big commitment. It's almost like a sports team type of commitment, so these kids are really, really engaged. On that note, I just wanted to briefly update you on, on math and where we are. I know through the budget process, we've talked about math acceleration. We have a plan for that, and, you know, it's on the website. So I know you're aware of it. This year, we've been, we've identified, and we mentioned this in the plan, but we've identified really the top five to seven percent of our eighth graders that are already in algebra. They're already accelerating in, in math. But we feel that they are such a distinguished level that we've actually made recommendations for them to begin a geometry course this year. And so we've made contact with parents, and we developed a spreadsheet of really all their scores, teacher recommendation, all that, and, and so happy to announce that we've moved that forward, and I've been working with a few kids, getting them, getting them started on that. And I'll give you updates as, as we go, but that'll be exciting. Those kids potentially next year could be in Algebra II as ninth graders, so.
Doing that through V-Lax or with one, or with a teacher?
With V-Lax, yeah. But our eighth grade math teacher, Miss Lechance, has been offering a lot of help to those, to those kids too, and getting them started. So there's definitely some support internally.
And do we have enough computers and access to computers for the students that need that?
Well, they're, they're taking V-Lax in, in simultaneously with their algebra class. So there's actually not a lot of time in their day for them to, to do this, enrichment is the only time. So we are availing computers for them during that time. They can certainly access in the library and, but it's, that, when I talk to them.
Just because we had an issue beginning of the year with a student.
Oh, in the library, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Getting access to a computer.
That was because, because with geometry V-Lax, that's a good, good point. With geometry V-Lax, you need some, some software installed on the computer so that they can access some of the, similar to the geometers program that I talked about in another meeting. So they had to set them up for that, yeah, so.
But we've solved that in the other rooms and stuff. That's not going to be an issue, so.
There has to be a dedicated computer for that V-Lax course, so that, and that software has to be.
Have we solved that problem for the middle school?
Yeah, it's.
So you add the ITs there and everything?
Yep.
Because seven, eight percent is, you know, that's seven, eight, nine kids.
Yeah.
All looking for a computer in a thirty-minute period of time.
Yeah, and, and understand, most of this work is going to be done outside of the school day. But, but they will have an opportunity if they, you know, if they have, enrichment is a catch-all for a lot of things, but they will have an opportunity during that time every day. And then finally, just our calendar. One thing that was not on this, I want to make sure I mention, is our concert is the eleventh. It's seven o'clock in the auditorium here at the high school, the holiday concert. And every Friday night, we have an event. This Friday is fifth grade movie night, next Friday is our school dance, and the third Friday of December is Books Made Into Movies Movie Night. Ms. Prevenzal has done a fantastic job this year of making our library more interactive and student-friendly, and so she's sponsoring some, some events throughout the year. So that'll be on the nineteenth. And our DC trip is, seems closer now than it did last year.
I see that you, you readjusted your schedule.
Oh, the, the date, yes. We had a conflict with spring sport playoffs. Trent County would not budge on that. Couldn't get them to change the softball playoff schedule for Litchfield Middle School.
That's because they wanted to get someone else a shot.
Yeah.
They're begging a DC.
It was a little presumptuous.
Bigger than DC.
To call them in September and say, yeah, can you change the week, because we're going to be in the championship? That was, yeah, not going to happen.
Of the twelve kids in math counts, are they all eighth graders?
No, it's a mix. It's a mix. I could get that breakdown. I'm not exactly sure. I have this update, but.
There's, I think, two or three seventh graders and a couple of sixth graders, and most of them have already, got this in there too.
Yeah, he, I, I mean, he sent me an update of what they were just, what they finished studying, and it was probability theory, combinations, permutations, NPK problems, Pascal's triangle and its relevance to NPK combination problems, prime factorization, GCD, LCM, prime number relation to cryptography, and binomial theorem in relation to problem solving. So that's what they've already covered.
And just for the record, they're doing it for fun.
Yeah. They're already smarter than me.
Thank you very much.
Bring us to Mrs. Rathaus in CHS.
So, good evening. We're going to sound a lot like the other two schools. We're also doing Understanding by Design. That's going to be our next late arrival day. I'm going to go through our acknowledgements, because Jody and I wanted to share with you some information on International High School and also the vocational agreement that we have with Alvern and Nashua North and South. And we visited Pinkerton Academy, and we thought that we would like to share that with you. But first of all, highlights. Shannon Zepan was honored as the New Hampshire Health and PE Teacher of the Year at the Neyford State Convention in Waterville Valley on November twenty-second. Congratulations and shout out to Jill Delo, Phil Martin, and the entire crew for The Wedding Singer. I don't know if you had a chance to see it, but it was an outstanding show. Student Council also had their efforts with Make a Difference Week in their canned food drive. Thank you to Jody Callan and Michelle Vaccarello for Career Day. We also had Suzie Marino and Jessica McPhee, who helped organize the days. We had twenty-eight speakers on a variety of careers, including our school board members who came, and it was a huge success for our kids. It really connects our careers with, with the future for them. Cal, this is our sports team leaders, they're creating a flock of penguins for the Penguin Plunge, and we are again inviting members of the school board. It is very exciting. It's like playing in the Olympics, and I would really.
It's colder.
It's a very exciting day. Every year, we raise more money. We have more student athletes who are, who are going. And if you've never done it, it should be on your bucket list. You should do it at least once in your life. It's, it's a lot of fun. I'm going to be doing it again. So, so if you, if you want to think about it, it's, it's great.
As I move to a warmer climate, I'll definitely consider it my bucket list.
More of a plunge, no problem.
Yes, yes. Eucinia Schuler and James started to look at all of our safety protocols, updating, you know, things on teen suicide and information for everyone. So, so a shout out to them. Our Booster Club did a great job with the basketball nights. Again, we had school members playing, which was great. Thanks to our PTO, our parent-teacher group, they, they sold pies, because we're still trying to get a banner for our one hundred and forty-two recognition. So they, they actually made about five hundred dollars. So we, we might be, you know, in the business now to, to get a banner. Our National Honor Society, Denise Freeman, they did a wonderful job. For anyone who was able to attend, we did have nineteen new members inducted into the National Honor Society, which was a beautiful ceremony. Huge congratulations to our football team for the first-ever football championship in the history. I know that, I read the minutes from last week, but, you know, the Bo game was so exciting, because, you know, it was, you know, they won nineteen games in a row. Bo went out there like, you know, like, this is just going to be, you know, you know, what they're going to blow us over and go to the championship. And Campbell just really surprised them. And then the, the best part was, you know, the next game, you know, because a lot of times after a team wins that big game, they don't come back and win the championship. So it was really great at UNH, having them win the state championship. Great job by Coach Gush and his entire staff, and congratulations to, to, to the team, you know, because every week they just got better and better, and, and it was really fun to watch. Congratulations to Hannah Neild and Sam Munley. We had two students who signed letters of attendance to Division One colleges last week. You know, it's amazing when you think of, we have, you know, we're a five-hundred, you know, pupil high school, and we have this kind of incredible athletes coming out of the school, signing letters of attendance, getting money to go to these great schools. It's, it's, it's really impressive. We're really excited. Jody and I had to take some tests for the International High School, so we passed our test. We're really happy, and we talked to Philip Bradley yesterday. He's, we're going to send to you, he, he was hoping to have it for today, but we did get cut off, the pie chart. And, and it's going to, it's going to show, like, you know, if a student comes to Campbell High School, the tuition that they would pay, which we got the numbers from Frank, you know, thirteen thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars, plus to the host family, which is close to nine thousand dollars. But, but he wanted to update it before we get, give it to you. So we'll just send that to you. You'll be able to look at it. That's the most updated information as, as we move forward with the International High School. We're going to have a pep rally on, on Friday, December fifth, to celebrate all of our success, the state championships, science kneecap. Everything's going to happen on, on a forty-five-minute pep rally on Friday. Our winter concert is December fourth. We have curriculum and leadership on the fourteenth. Going, it, it was really interesting, John, because tonight you talked about smarter balance and testing, and yesterday in our faculty meeting, Jody ruled out our timeline, and people started to talk about, you know, what are other school districts doing? Jody and I had actually met with Dr. Cochran a couple months ago to talk about, you know, other testing. And so there, we've, we've had this conversation about, you know, Trinity High School, for example, does, they do a testing day. So they do ASPIRE for freshmen, PSATs for sophomores, and then SATs for juniors. And then their seniors have a day to go out and look at colleges. So, you know, just thinking on the same page that we've, we've already had some of those conversations. And finally, just today, I got a letter, so I, it's not here, but Gabe DeJardins was just accepted in the two thousand and fifteen NAFME Eastern Division Orchestra. He is only one of twenty-two students selected from the whole state of New Hampshire, and he'll be playing in Providence next April. So this is another great thing for the music department. It's a, it's a huge award, and it, it just shows how talented our teachers are and what a great job they're doing with our students. Okay, now, Pinkerton Academy. Yeah, you want to pass, pass it, Joe?
Dr. Cochran, did you want me to wait and give out these at a future date, or you come to us?
It doesn't matter.
These are going out now. So Lori and I and Bill Hicks had a really nice tour over at Pinkerton Academy a couple weeks ago. One of the things that prompted us to ask for a tour after receiving. Doctor, everybody, Dr. Cochran's permission to go ahead and start looking around. What prompted us to do the tour at Pinkerton is a time constraint for our students. As you know, currently, our students attend their CTE classes at both Alvern and Nashua North and South. And sometimes we seem to package Nashua as one school, and in fact, it is two schools and two separate buildings, two separate exits, which requires a lot of time for our busing. So our Alvern students are well-served there at being a five-minute bus ride or a car ride in a couple of kids' cases. Where our Nashua students, although, are gaining a lot of knowledge from the curriculum that's being offered in Nashua, time-wise, it's a huge constraint for our students. It can take forty minutes for the kids to get to South, and then another fifteen minutes sometimes to get to North. So the time constraint is a real difficult problem. In addition, the transportation can also be quite a. In addition, um, the transportation can also be quite a shuffle in the process as well. Um, so, we took a look at Pinkerton's programs. I was employed by Pinkerton Academy from oh-four to oh-eight. So, I was pretty familiar with what they had. But since oh-eight, um, I have to tell you, they've done a phenomenal job. They've grown and grown and grown. Built, um, there's six new buildings since oh-eight that are all part of the CTE program. So, um, I've met and met and met with their director of the CTE program there and pulled together a lot of data to show how our programs from Nashua could align with Pinkerton. Um, our students who are currently in their first year of a CTE program in Nashua could be served in Pinkerton at a lower per-student cost, but also, the nice benefit would be at a lower cost for, for transportation as well, which has been a real difficulty for us over the past few years. Um, I don't know if you want me to give them this information yet? You want me to send electronically?
Why don't we just give them a little bit of background information in case you're not familiar with the CTE program? CTE programs are funded through federal dollars, through the state, uh, through a piece of legislation called the Perkins Grant. Uh, at one point in time, it, it funded almost all the requirements, but as with a lot of other things, that, that funding is going down. At the same point in time, uh, transportation costs are getting very expensive and prohibitive in a lot of ways. But basically, CTE programs are two-year programs that are, that are almost always taken in a junior and senior year. So, you're year one, year two, uh, ninety minutes a day, every day, all year. You know, there's a range of programs. Uh, I know Jody and, and, uh, Principal Rothaus has done a great job of looking at the matrix of the Alvern programs, North and South programs, uh, and, and Pinkerton. And it's nice to look and say, here's the programs that they offer. But the issue that we're having is, as we're trying to offer more relevant options for students, isn't what programs can we, do, they have, but what programs can we actually get them in? And the other thing is, if it takes a student forty minutes to get to Nashua North by way of Nashua South and Alvern on the way, another forty minutes back, they're missing half their instructional day here for a ninety-minute class every day. So, what are the other academic obstacles that we're creating for students? Uh, right now, we're in Region sixteen, which is ourselves, Alvern, uh, Nashua, Milford. I mean, Jody's got the list here. They, they put a lot of-
This is the lovely map of all the different regions. You can see we're right, right on the border of a couple of regions.
But honestly, transportation to Pinkerton is not only shorter, it's quicker, and the traffic isn't as heavy. And they also tend to be a little bit more user-friendly in terms of, we'd look, the, the information was that they would only have classes offered for our students first and third period. So, with Nashua, we may have students there first period, second period, third period, or fourth period, which means that you can't get there with one bus on one day. And one bus for an entire year for that is about?
So much money.
Ballpark?
Well, we're, I, I was gonna say, we're, we're already over-budgeted, you know, this year because the cost went up. And then we, we couldn't get all of our needs met with first students. Then we had to go to another busing company that knew we were desperate, so they, you know, were overcharging us. So, Frank had to, like, meet with everybody to try to come up with a plan just to get through this year. But is it thirty thousand?
Well, it's, we budgeted for one bus, which was around thirty-eight thousand. And the cost estimate right now is around a hundred and twenty thousand.
Procedurally, we've had some good conversations about, uh, we have allowed students to self-transport in the past. And I know the board has had some conversations about, well, the policy says you can do it for convenience. So, we've had people in, at the high school whose first period have to be at Alvern. And before, we used to make them drive here, park the car, wait, get on a bus, go to Alvern when their house is halfway to Alvern. And so, we, we, you know, use that policy a little bit more liberally, and we may have to in the, in the future. But, eh, you know, uh, the high school administration, I think, has done a really nice job of, of, of trying to identify what are all the appropriate questions, what do we need to know, what are the enrollments like? In the case of Pinkerton, because they're a public-private partnership, one of the concerns is that, you know, what's happening with, with other people? You've got Hooks at Auburn, Candia folks who may not be especially happy. So, they're really doing their due diligence in terms of asking enrollment types of questions. What have our, what have our historical, uh, enrollments been and whether or not they could accommodate us in, in the future? So, they, they spent a lot of hours on this in the last three weeks.
It's a lot of data here.
Yeah.
There is a lot of data here. And, and you're right, Dr. Cochran. Hooks at currently does, um, attend Pinkerton CTE programs, but they're on a year-to-year basis because of their situation as well. And their eighth-grade students can select one of four high schools. Pinkerton is one of their choices. So, um, Hooks at really does have a number of options. Um, Pinkerton actually hasn't heard anything from Auburn. I guess they're up in the air as well. And London Dairy currently uses, um, Alvern and Manchester School of Technology.
And they're interested in-
They were interested in Pinkerton, but Pinkerton really hasn't heard anything. Jack Ruby, who runs the CTE program at Pinkerton, told us that they started looking five years ago and still haven't been able to make a decision in five years. So, um-
Well, there's a great competition between-
What decision are they looking to make? To, to move their CTE program also?
Completely.
Yes, yes.
So, I don't know, Dr. Cochran, if that's data that you want me to share electronically, hard copy, down the road.
Let's just give them a quick overview. The procedurally, this is a significant change in high school program. We've seen a significant growth in the number of students who have been able to take advantage of CTE programs. There have been a, a cost with that, as you've noted budgetarily. But these programs are intended for students who, this is their career. If you're gonna be, wanna go into auto mechanics, if you wanna go into, uh-
Nursing.
Yeah.
Hairdressing.
I mean, if you, if you look at those, these, this is intended to support students who may or may not be going to, uh, two-year colleges. But their interest in the future and their passion is about trades. And it will give them, uh, you know, two years of, of experience, introductory courses. In some cases, give them advanced standing and easier application to their programs, uh, at essentially no cost to them. Because of Perkins, a lot of the cost is, is taken away. And if you really do wanna serve the needs of all of the students, I think budgetarily, it's, it's, uh, worth it. We have to do what we can to keep the busing costs down, so we can spend as much money as, as we can on, you know, the programmatic pieces. So, uh, procedurally, they're gonna continue to do their homework, have the conversations. They, they've been asking all the right questions. They're getting very clear answers. But probably with the program of studies, now, they'll have to come back. And because this is, this is part of the program of studies, it'll be part of the approval process that the board goes through when they present the program of studies. It may have to happen a little bit sooner. Jody, you indicated that, um, the Pinkerton Board only meets twice a year, so we could probably not move from Region sixteen to whatever region they're in. But they would offer, we could operate at least for a year under an MOU. Is that correct?
That is cu- That's correct. They said they would be happy to work with us on an MOU for a year.
So, the next thing really is for them to continue that dialogue, um, with Pinkerton administration, go through our registration process. We have to verify that all of our students that are in year-one programs in Nashua, we'd be able to place them in year-two programs there. Jody's already done all the legwork with that. She knows all of the, the courses. And we may have one, in some cases, somebody go, they, they take one year, year-one program, and they don't opt to continue. So, you know, we're gonna have to have some, some conversations. When I say we, uh, I'm just really meaning Jody doing all the work.
So, in, in, in this, so, if we make the decision, we're not gonna make a decision that says, "Well, we understand you started in Nashua for a year, and we're moving to Pinkerton." If they lose a class, you understand, we're not gonna send people to two places. You know, this is gonna be one of those things where we're moving, we're moving. It's not, "Well, I still wanna go to Nashua," well, or Alvern, or, I guess, you know, I guess if they're driving their own transportation, that may be, that may be-
That's, that's the one thing. Because, because the national law doesn't require that, that high school students be provided transportation, we could have somebody who would choose to self-transport. And, you know, the, the tuition difference is, is actually quite minimal. So, we may have a little bit more flexibility in, in that regard. But, yeah, I, the, the goal would be to-
Look at that policy?
To make a clean sweep.
To allow more juniors and seniors to, that, have the ability to, to drive, drive?
Right now, the policy that's there actually does give us the ability to do that. I mean, one of the, one of the things that, that aside is, is convenience. So, we had in the past kind of, not that we wouldn't, weren't, allow students to self-transport, but our preference, we didn't, we wouldn't, didn't openly let them know that in fact, all they had to do was fill out the form, provide the paperwork, and, and be able to self-transport. As it turns out, we have been, as, as the board members have pointed out earlier this year, been pretty conservative with that, and perhaps we should stop. And in fact, when you guys were talking to folks at Pinkerton about busing and parking and stuff like that, they've indicated that it was unusual for schools to provide transportation, that they're used to students essentially all self-transporting.
And it, it used to be that schools, like, you know, when they were at capacity, they, they didn't want, they wanted kids coming on buses. But as, as, you know, populations have gone down, at a, a lot of schools, there's more room for parking. So, they, they, uh, I remember when Alvern would say, "No, you cannot, a student cannot park here." And now, they're, you know, Jody calls and they say, "Sure, we can, we can accommodate that." So-
Does a student go over there for just one forty-five-minute class?
Uh, one ninety usually.
Yes.
So, but there, but there's class schedules, forty-five-minute class, forty-five-minute periods?
So, their CTE programs done are, are two periods long.
Okay.
So, they just create their own double period within that.
So, A, B, okay.
Right, yeah. So, they definitely run on that A-through-H periods.
This is a real burden to students. And as much as we try every year to coordinate calendars, you know, we have our kneecap testing or our smarter balance testing on a different day as some of our partner schools. And you've got vacations that may or may not align. And you've got early releases that we haven't. And so, kids have to give up a lot to participate in a, in a CTE program. They really have to want to do this. But by and large, either they go there and decide, "In fact, this is exactly what I want to do," or in some cases, it's just as important for them to go there and find out, "You know what? I really thought I would like this, and it's a great hobby, but I don't wanna do this for a living." So, you know, I think it's a, I think it's an important part of, of serving the needs of, of all the students. It's a decision that, that the high school and the, and the board can't take lightly. And I, you know, really appreciate all the work that you folks have put into this, you two and, and Mr. Hicks.
And they did say, you know, if, if someone on the school board wanted to come for a tour, I mean, the, the facility is amazing. And some of the things that, that, you know, I like comparing them to the other programs are, they, they have all of these buildings, so it's really friendly. So, like, if, you know, they have the hairdressing school. So, people in the community can go get their hair done, but you go into a separate building. Or, or if you wanna get your dog washed, you know, they have a separate building. And, you know, so there's, um, because it's right there and it's so hands-on, it's easy to get to. People from the community use it as a service. So, they really have, you know, even their restaurant, you know. It, it's not like you have to go in a tunnel and to get there. It's like right there. You walk in the door and they have this great restaurant. So, I think it's, I, I loved, I loved everything about that.
And it would just provide our kids with a different type of atmosphere, too, to be from-
An eighteen-minute-
-one small building to eighteen large buildings. It's definitely a different environment.
Will that, uh, uh, cause us to begin to look at our beginning and ending date for school? To begin to mirror their dates? Cause they got a pretty strict, you know, tardiness and-
Well, um-
...policy in here. So, I mean, you know, if they're missing class, they're-
Our history has been to align with Alvern, quite honestly, because that's, that's been our longest CTE partner and, and, and most consistent one. And we still have a lot of kids at Alvern. So, you have to, to, to pick and choose that. Every year, the superintendents meet and try to align the court, the, the calendars of things to try and, and, uh, uh, make it easier on students. And there was one year that several districts made a proposal and agreement to try and move forward with changing the April vacation to aligning with other districts. And it lasted till the next board meeting. Uh, and then all of those agreements went away because people had time shares, like, years in advance. And so, that didn't align with everyone's plan. But, um, you know, I, I think, I think it's, uh, an appropriate step to take. I think it's gonna be better use of money, better use of students' time, helping them, you know, miss less time. And, uh, you know, procedurally, we'll have to see. Their registration opens very early.
They begin registration in mid-January. Where, where our timeline is March. I'm looking at Tom because I already set a date to go down to the middle school. I wanna say it was the Wednesday, first Wednesday of March, maybe the fifth or sixth of March, is when we're gonna be kicking off. So, our timelines are definitely off by about a month and a half.
So, would the students have to sign up for the CTE courses and then backfill their schedule?
That is exactly what we do. Mm-hmm. We just make the assumption they may not get it, just in case, so that I'm not scrambling in the summer trying to fill that.
So, what's the capacity? Do they have the capacity to absorb us?
Yes.
That's one of the big questions on our list.
Yeah, both Jack Ruby, who is the CTE director, um, and then Lori and I spoke with Chris Harper, who is their Dean of, um, Curriculum and Instruction today. And both of them indicated that, um, they would make every effort to give us the spaces that we needed. And they looked at, um, they asked me for all of this data back for five years. So, I sent them five years of data of what our students took for courses. Um, this year, we have the most students ever in the past ten years taking. We have thirty students and are taking a CTE class right now, um, at four different schools. So, they looked at our data and felt that they could meet every one of our needs.
Now, the fact that Director Callan and Assistant Principal Perez and, uh-
Mr. Raymond.
Mr. Raymond all worked at Pinkerton at one point in their, we don't expect any favors at all.
No, we don't.
We all worked in Nashua, too.
We all worked in Nashua together, too.
Quality folks there. They offer a good program.
They do.
So, are these- It, it's in their best interest to keep their classes full because they're the ones that are paying the salaries. They're the ones who are doing the building upkeep. And, and so, there is a financial advantage to them to, to be full. And the feedback that I've gotten in, in my external conversations, and the feedback that you folks seem to have gotten as well, is that they are, because of that, user-friendly and, and really seem to be a, a partner in this situation.
Is this, um, more options? This, this, what they offer on, on page six, more options or less options than we presently have?
I'm gonna say-
At Nashua, um, it's, it's actually a couple of less courses that are different. So, some different options. So, for example, all of our students that are taking a class at Nashua right now, every single one of those classes are offered at Pinkerton except for one, which is a design and visual communications class, which is Adobe. And so, you can take those as standalones versus part of a CTE program. So, that is the only course that Pinkerton could not duplicate that Nashua offers. However, Pinkerton offers a welding class that is not offered at Alvern nor Nashua. Um, and then Nashua has a biotechnology program, a hospitality program, and an HVAC program that isn't duplicated at any other school.
Between North and South, it's actually the largest CTE center in the state. But I think having a pro, as I said earlier, having the programs is different from being able to get students into the programs. When I was there, ninety-two or ninety-three percent of the students in the programs were Nashua students. They really don't, not that they don't need the, the, the external people, but there's, they have great demand. And they have programs, for example, their culinary programs, uh, are over, over-enrolled. So, if, you know, and so, there are other programs that are over-enrolled, so in theory, they have more programs. But, you know, we're really looking at, at enrollment trends and openings, so that we're not just looking at simply what programs are there, but what's the likelihood of getting our kids into the programs that, that they most desire and need. So, we're trying to go past the surface and really do our due diligence. We know that five years down the road, things may change, but at, at least we wanna to be able to do some mapping and, and, and know that we're trying to do something that's in the best interest of the student.
Just, just on a sidebar, we have a very expensive license with Adobe for Creative Suite InDesign digital programs. That should be something we should be able to do in-house without going to- We have a very, I know the license. I know the program. That should be something we should be teaching on our own.
That should be something we should be teaching on our own set of computers in our own building. If people are looking to do graphic design and digital design, because we have the software and we pay the license for the software, we should be maximizing that.
This is a big step. The folks are doing a great job in terms of doing their homework. They'll continue to work with the folks at Pinkerton and, you know, timelines. And we'll get back to the chair about a time. We may have to entertain an MOU before the program of studies or after, but in terms of the registration piece.
Just in terms of that date, it's March fourth, Wednesday, March fourth.
March fourth is the Wednesday.
CHS counselors are coming up, and then the parent night's March fifth, so Thursday.
When I spoke to Mr. Harper, who's the dean of students there, dean of programs there, he indicated that they open early. But, you know, it's open for a significant amount of time. At the same point in time, knowing that seats sometimes fill up, we don't want to, we want to be aggressive in terms of trying to find out what the need is and get those kids placed ASAP.
It sounds like there's a lot of advantages just the one area centrally located, aside from the cost savings. I see it more as like the amount of time that the students lose
Yeah.
in transporting back and forth to Nashua. I know, and talking to Doc Clarkman, I mean, there's like an hour that can be lost.
Right, and then for us, it costs more money, too, Brian, because we have kids that can't get into classes here because, you know, the time, no matter what we do with the, so now, we have to offer a six-block or offer an independent study, you know, because we want our vote kids to have all their opportunities, but it's not their fault that they're sitting on a bus for an hour, you know.
And they spend ninety minutes at school and they spend another ninety minutes being transported.
Exactly.
I mean, happy day is gone.
You're correct.
When you give twenty-four credits, when you spend a lot of hours on a bus.
Well, that's one of the credits, right? Bus riding?
Yes, I think that is. I think that's a new one.
One of the other points I just wanted to bring up on the counseling side is, to date, we have sixty-one percent of our seniors have applied for college, which is up from fifty percent at this time last year. So, we have a lot more kids moving a lot faster, and we already have fifteen students who have received acceptances that we're aware of. So, we have plenty of paws in the window, so that's a good thing, too. And then, we have, John, I know this might be of interest to you, but we have seven of our CHS students going on Saturday to assist the Litchfield Women's Club, and I'm only saying that because I know your wife's involved, not because you are, to the Santa breakfast, so that's a nice thing that they're doing to chip in as well.
I appreciate that, Helen.
I know that. We're looking for it. And then, we have our alumni panel this year. We have twelve students that are going to be returning to us to talk about their college or military or two-year or work experiences with our juniors and seniors on Monday, December twenty-second. So, we have that coming up as well, and it'd be a good use of time right before the holiday. Usually, in past years, they always ran that program in January. And then, today, I looked at our timeline for January, and we only have two weeks of classes when we return from the holiday break before we do midterm.
Finals.
So, I said, "We better move this event up because those two weeks are going to be needed to start prepping and gearing for that." So, busy time of year.
Yeah, teachers always start panicking right before finals.
Yeah, we don't want them to do that, so, just very busy. And smarter balance, we already have our timeline figured out about when we're going to be offering all of the testing. Because we have a very large junior class of a hundred and forty students, we're going to have to try to do it in two waves per day because we have about ninety computers slash laptops available at one given time. So, we're going to have to do it in two different waves, but, so we're trying to work out the kinks on that right now, and it's
Interesting.
It's interesting, yeah. I can't say that I'm happy to see it. I like John's idea much better, but, and I think I don't stand alone in that. I know there's a lot of staff members that would prefer to see us go more in a different model as well, but we know what, this is what we've got ahead of us for this year, so we're going to have to make the best of that and see how that works out. So, we're working out those kinks right now.
There's a very good chance that London Dairy may have their pilot approved to use PSAT and SAT. There will be a district cost for that because there's a set amount that smarter balance costs. And if you want to do something other than that which the state funds, then thou shalt pay.
For our district, if we ran such a model like that here, it would be about sixty-eight hundred dollars of cost for our freshmen, sophomore, and juniors to do SAT or Aspire instead of doing smarter balance, about sixty-eight hundred dollars. Small chunk of change.
But maybe the SAT kids, they're going to take it anyway, so.
Twenty-one million dollar budget, right?
Yeah, no problem. Throw that in the budget somewhere, right?
He says twenty-one million.
That's it, otherwise, happy holidays, right?
So, did you see in the recommendation in the HLN that Litchfield or Campbell and Alveron should have an angled turkey bowl?
I did see that, yes, yeah, here, that we're supposed to be playing Alveron now on Thanksgiving, Lori, so that can be another one of your duties.
It's up to get John Patterson work on, yeah.
Yep.
He gets his field.
Jody, I know you've been flat out, the career day was even more successful than last year. Numbers were up, people were enthusiastic. And the people who were here last year, who were returning presenters, seemed to enjoy themselves even more. I think they really appreciated the quality of the students and the level of engagement. You know, I saw kids sitting there literally leaning forward, looking, just the same look I see when I walk past Mr. Cooper's room. They were that good.
More time was helpful, too. I remember last year, we ran out of time because it was, I think it was like twenty minutes you had in. No time for questions or anything, but this year, I think it was like thirty minutes or forty-five minutes.
We tried to drag him out to be more like forty, forty-five minutes so that you would have time to go through and have questions. And one of the things that Michelle, our new admin assistant, did was, we got out of the year nineteen eighty. Last year, we did everything. We had kids sign up on paper and pencil. It was hideous because it took weeks for us to then get back to the kids, so she did sign-up genius, which was amazing.
Genius.
It was amazing. We were able to print out a roster of every advisor, their kids, which time slots they're speaking. We just had the advisors make sure that the kids knew. We sent them out, and it was a great resource and tool. So, Michelle was awesome in finding the right resources this year, too, so that was good. And having a couple of seniors involved to help brainstorm and get their friends involved was really helpful, too. So, it was good, and we have such great people in the community. And one of the things I was telling you guys at the beginning was that it's such a huge undertaking, but it's so important. But at the same time, being in such a small town, you continue to dig in the same pool that you start feeling a little guilty. So, it probably is an event that we could host every other year and still have it be just as effective. So, we'll probably skip next year, but then the year after, we could just kick it back up in gear. It's good stuff.
So, is it open to both juniors and seniors?
Career fair's our school, the entire school. So, freshmen were sitting there in kind of awe. I don't think they really knew what the heck was going on.
Can never be too early, though.
Yeah, but they were great. The kids that were in, the two sets of kids that I had spoken to were just amazing. Wonderful questions, very, very insightful questions. They all listened. They were very attentive. It was a great experience as on the part of a presenter to see these kids just so engaged, and it was great.
Thank you for sharing that.
All right, thank you very much. That brings us to the curriculum report. I think Mr. Burke is actually doing the perk report tonight. Julie's asked me to thank you for volunteering.
Really? Before the principals all leave, did we, Frank, did you have any information from the bus company?
Nope.
About schedule changes or?
It's going to take some time. That's not a quick turnaround for them.
They promised you a week.
Oh, they didn't promise me. They didn't respond to my request for a week. Give us to York a week, come on now. I know it's the holiday season. We're the ones asking favors. You have to be a little more patient sometimes. They didn't respond to my request for a week. Good night, thank you. Thank you, Jody. Curriculum instruction report, Julie's unavailable. The bottom half of the page is planning for smarter balance, and I think the three administrators will all cover that. Scott and Tom, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Good night.
Julie actually is going to be one of, a couple of people involved in the next South Central Superintendent's meeting presenting on kind of where districts are with best practice. I think the work that LMS and GMS and more recently, CHS has done in terms of the preparation is some of the best work that I've heard of, and so, kudos to them. Julie was able to attend at no cost to us, three days in Sacramento, or four days in Sacramento, where she was involved in PD on the performance tasks for smarter balance, specifically for the math ones. And so, she's part of a small number of people who are a pool as a resource in the entire state. And so, for four days of her time, we now have, you know, one of the best resources in the state in terms of that internally and available to all of our staff and schools, so very worthwhile. She's a very well-regarded curriculum person and continues to do good work.
We met two weeks ago now, I think. The last meeting was mostly talking about information and communication technology courses. They're looking to revamp some of that and add some more courses that might be of more interest to the students. So, we talked a lot about some ideas we have around courses. One of the ones I recommended, it was actually handy having the career fair last week because I talked about a digital marketing course that could kind of bridge technology, you know, business and marketing, and maybe even English when it comes to, you know, how do you write content for marketing and stuff like that. That was one of the courses I came up with and recommended. I did my presentation at the career fair on digital marketing, and a lot of the students were engaged in it. And I asked them, like, "Would you be interested in a course like this?" And a lot of them were, so it was kind of a cool way to bridge the two. So, we talked about that. We talked about the AP Statistics class, which I think needs to be recommended.
Is that going to be, I haven't seen the proposal, is that a ninety minutes every other day?
The AP Stats class? I don't know if we talked about that.
We moved calculus, AP Calculus to a ninety minutes daily.
Ninety minutes daily, so you get a full credit for?
So, that would be important case.
Two credits, it'd be a credit and elective then. If it's every day for ninety minutes, it'd be a credit.
Be a credit person, man.
So, that would be an important thing to
I don't know.
To know.
They don't have any, are they just asking us to approve a new course? They don't have any of the backup behind the, any of the backup behind it?
We need to know a bit about one or two credits because of stat and six-block and that sort of thing.
She could do it much, much more justice than I could.
She was, she said, "If you're comfortable with it, fine, and if not, not to worry." We will go. We'll wrap back around to the issue of everyday geometry because remember, the first time it was offered was twelve thirteen, and the rationale for everyday geometry was that students were coming into geometry with weak algebra skills, and they were failing geometry, not because they were failing the geometry part, but they didn't have the algebra skills to support the geometry concepts. And since then, last year, we had an Everyday Algebra I. This year, an Everyday Pre-Algebra, and an Everyday Algebra I, and an Everyday Geometry, so.
Are those all one-credit classes, right?
Those are two-credit classes, one math credit and one elective credit because they take it ninety minutes a day all year. So, it is intensive.
Freshmen, sophomores, right?
They could take it, they can take, there's two distinct groups. The Everyday Pre-Algebra, the Everyday Algebra I is intended for students who have some weakness in algebra, and with additional work, could really still be quite successful, have a lot of math options ahead of them. The Pre-Algebra folks who are those that need a more intensive remediation, we're expecting a lot of those will take Pre-Algebra daily, Algebra daily. In the same way that if we do this well, and we have really good people working on this, if we do this well, the need for geometry daily should go away. In the same way that if with the double math at grade seven, should reduce the need for as many students to have to take Pre-Algebra daily and Algebra I daily. So, the sooner you can remediate, the sooner you can, you know, keep that instruction effective and
So, what, do they have to take other AP classes to take AP Statistics?
No, there's no
So, why are we making it an AP class? Why aren't we just making it a statistics class?
You could do that. There's some schools who offer it as, you can take, you can take it as a regular class. For example,
Well, wouldn't the rigor at an AP, an AP course be much more challenging than the rigor on a regular statistics class?
Because you have to meet a college standard, right?
And there are some people who do it split that way. So, you have, in the same way that Ms. Angelini teaches calculus A, B with some B, C kids in there, it's not uncommon in a high school of this size to have, you know, an honors class and a non-honors together with the honors option, or AP stats and regular stats together.
I mean, the biggest key for me is to have all seniors taking another math class, you know? And I know that, you know, we've kicked around, you know, the extended diploma twenty credits and stuff like that, but the biggest key is the, is to have a curriculum and a process in which you're allowing seniors to skip a year of math if they did well freshman, sophomore, junior year. Take a year off for math and to expect them then, when they get to college, to be ready for college math or anything is and I don't know if that's, you know, probably would have been a great conversation having with the high school people here, but they could tell us that that's an issue. But I really believe that whether it's AP Statistics or both AP Statistics and Regular Statistics, we need to offer that for the kids who, if they don't want to do calculus and they don't want to do, just so they're doing because I found, for me myself, I found statistics to be more useful in the business world than calculus.
It's more interesting, too, for students. If you're not really into math, you don't want to take calculus, but you might want to take statistics.
Yeah, I think analyzing and collecting and data is
Mr. Burke, the new minimum standards for public school approval require that high school students take math every year in their four-year experience or a course that has a significant math experience in it.
Business.
And that, it may be. Or if you're a CTE, if you're a CTE student in a machining program, then, you know, that may qualify. But so, there's some local control over what qualifies as a significant math component. But it's on the books as requiring math, and I agree with you, and that's the rationale behind the state board decision.
The idea that to have twenty-four credits and for us still not to, to still have it, only say three math credits is still very difficult for me that, you know, again, those are the things that I think the board needs to review for the coming years, over the next, again, you know, while it's the five of us, that we can begin to look at these things and lay that foundation for, you know, the coming students and stuff. And, you know, and I understand that, you know.
So, we're going to, I think we're recycling Perk to the next meeting or the next time that Dr. Yen
It's actually, it's funny you mention that, though, because we met on this two weeks ago. Last week, when I was at the career fair, I happened to be presenting in Mrs. Gorman's room, who's a math teacher. So, at the end, she was prepping me with questions. She's like, "So, what'd you take for math in college and stuff?" Trying to get the kids more interested in math, obviously. And I mentioned stats, and she had said that there used to be a statistics class here, and that it was actually very popular. And I mentioned that we were talking about bringing one back, and she's like, "Well, AP is good enough, but it's not for all kids."
And that's where I'm saying, I mean, AP stats is
That might not be a bad question to pose back to the high school. Can we offer this as stats slash AP stats, especially if it's a one-credit course? Then that's doable because you're really only looking at a small audience.
I think you'd be looking at a much larger audience if you had just regular statistics and not an AP Statistics. It'd be like having calculus and then AP calc, I mean, AP Calculus or people who are looking at engineering and those types of
One of the most popular AP courses is actually AP Psych, and I don't know, it doesn't
It's statistics?
It often appeals to a very different audience, AP Psych. And it often appeals to a very different audience. You know, we're actually relatively strong in the course offerings in the sort of mass science cluster, but not so much for the kids who are, you know.
And the social services type of things?
Social studies and, and, you know. I mean, given our size, I think we've really grown our, the AP program well and I think we've supported it well. We're trying to not just put a course up there, but actually build a pipeline that allows kids to be successful. And I'm really excited about the options that Mr. McLeiter was talking about in terms of the accelerated math program. With, it really starts at the end of grade four where students would take grade five math in grade five and have the option of, you know, if we can find the funding, be supported to, to take grade six math through V-Lex. And then in grade six, they take the double seven math and then in seven, they take Algebra I. And then they wouldn't have to be taking Algebra I and geometry doubled up in the same year. They'd be taking Algebra I.
They're not having to take AP calculus as freshmen. They're going to have to find more math classes. I'm, no, I'm with you. I, you know, you know, math is one of those.
It's not to be all in all, but, you know, I have to say, the last three to four years have been, you know, significant growth, significant attention and, and I think we're blessed to have fine teachers and I think we put a lot of program thought into what we're doing in the district.
Tom was talking about that new grading process. And he was, he had also informed me when I was over there with the parent teacher conference. I was talking to him, that Nash was going to a numbering system for their grading or something like that. You don't have any tie-in over there or anything anymore? Anyway, I'm just saying is, I know that his, his school is re-looking at the grading scale and stuff. Are the other two schools doing it?
We're having some common conversations. One of the, one of the difficulties has become, we're talking about standards-based grading. And there's just about as many definitions of standards-based grading as people who know how to say it. So the question becomes, so you could walk in and see eight totally different models and people would all say, this is standards-based grading. I mean, to me, the biggest principle is that a student's grade, whether it's a letter grade, a number grade or a one, two, three, four and a whole bunch of standards should be, as the phrase goes, an undiluted measure of the student's academic performance. Because it's not helpful to anyone when a student gets a B and you don't know if that, as I said before, is a brilliant student who doesn't do their homework and is a pain in the butt in the class or is this somebody who really struggles and does as much extra help and is a really good student and they're really performing at a C level, but their grades are B, the other person's performing at an A-plus level, their grades are B. And we really don't communicate that well. So we have to pull out the, you know, the behavior, the attendance, you know, minimize the grade impact of homework. I think it's really difficult to eliminate it because you have to have it worth something with some students, otherwise they won't do it. But I think, I think actually Campbell does a pretty good job of kind of working that. They have enough, they have some flexibility within the model that's there. So that's coming. So the question, I don't think the question is if we're going to move to standards-based grading. The question is going to be when and what does that actually mean? In my experience, parents like a grade. You can do standards-based grading as a list of twenty-three standards, one, two, three, four for each of them. And then the parent wants to know, so overall, how's my child doing? And if they have twenty-three standards each with a one, two, three, four, it's usually pretty easy to aggregate that to some number that represents their performance. So that's, I'll, I'll give you my bias upfront, but I think you can do both in a, in a system that makes sense. So that as a parent or as a student, you can say, so basically overall I'm a B-plus and here are the areas that are really strong and here are the areas I need more work. So you have that global number and the drill down. But yes, conversations have begun at LMS. I think a little further than the other two. But elementary school is actually a pretty performance-based by their nature. And with Campbell being competency-based, I think it makes for an easier transition as well. And in some ways, they're very, very parallel.
All right, I think it's committee reports, budget committee. So needless to say, we started and presented our first three budgets last night. And if you want to have any idea of how it's going, the very first line on the very first budget was over budgeted by two hundred dollars versus last year. And that was a point of conversation. Which was line two seventy-two conference workshop. And then they started talking globally as far as across all the budgets, two seventy-two and five eighty, which is travel expenses for those. But for some reason, and it happened a few times during the conversations where they were looking globally rather than like, let's start focusing one at a time.
Why don't you just bring them a global budget?
Well, we did.
You can be done tomorrow.
We did that with payroll and salaries and benefits and they didn't care for that, so.
You just tell them, you're giving them what they say they want.
Yeah, then we got the curriculum. And needless to say, they were as confused as we were for some time and still are as far as six forty and six forty-one. New textbooks, old textbooks, replacement textbooks. And the conversation came up because, again, Andrew had his spreadsheet going. And we're requesting eighty thousand dollars for new textbooks.
Yeah, that's about right. I thought that's about right.
Yeah, but then there's an additional, when you go through the budgets, about another forty, fifty thousand dollars spread out through the three schools. So I looked at it real quick because tomorrow night it's going to be CHS. CHS is requesting twenty thousand, six hundred and eighty-one dollars additional in new textbooks.
Let me pull those out.
That line can be deceiving because if you look at six forty-one, it's not, even though we call it textbooks.
Right.
There are reference texts in there, there are periodicals in there by, by the script of the Department of.
Consumables in there?
Yes.
Sorry?
Not at six forty or six forty-one, I don't believe. That's.
Consumables.
I thought I saw it in GMS.
Yeah, yes, there are some consumables in there. There are.
When I was looking through like GMS, there were.
So I think by definition, you see the caption in the, in the, on the chart of accounts. And you see textbooks, so automatically it's textbooks, but if you look at it, there are consumables in there, periodicals, psychology as reference.
Right, but there are, there are several textbooks, just in CHS alone.
No, I need it for six forty.
Four of these, four of these, four of these, four of these.
But even in, in English, you've got, you might have a major textbook and then you might have anthologies. You might have novels, you might have short stories.
Yeah, but anything, anything that they were, anything that they were buying in any volume, other than a replacement book. A replacement meaning, I need one book for my English class because this one was destroyed and we need it for the kids. All of those were supposed to be moved.
To six forty.
To Dr. Heon's budget, so.
District-wide.
District-wide.
Right, but if you look at them, that's what I'm saying, it's, so she's responsible for buying like the whole group of books.
But you shouldn't be.
But in CHS, there's like four of this to replace this, four of this, four of this, four of this, and then adds up like three thousand dollars. Then you go to the next one. It just is a lot of books.
So it's replacements then, right? Those are the ones you're talking about there. We need four more because four got destroyed last year or something.
So.
I don't remember looking, I don't remember.
Inventory of currently used textbooks is what that was, yeah.
I mean, four books at a time, I shouldn't.
No, what I'm saying is.
A hundred bucks a book, you're four hundred.
Yeah, but in CHS, it's, there's.
Twenty thousand.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. It's in eleven different places in her budget.
Yeah. And in some cases, for example, Spanish enrollments are up again this year. And so they had enough books, but they needed three more for Spanish one and four more for Spanish two. And then there was a fairly big purchase in there for the new Spanish four class because it turns out our Spanish books kind of aligned in between and so what we were using for three is more of a two book and so on, so.
But again, those purchases should be not in the high school. If you're doing a major purchase in a class or, or a subject matter.
Yeah, I mean, the highest one is fifty-three hundred dollars.
Was the, the class set for Spanish four into the district budget. But the other ones are four or five additional books that we need because of enrollment changes were in six forty.
Yeah.
I don't think we're through yet on how we need to report this.
I mean, I mean.
Because the next step is going to be, as we move from this to electronic resources, you're still going to be, you want to track what are we spending on learning resources for content, so.
So it's just kind of hard to like present it to them, all right, six forty is now in the curriculum and one person responsible, eighty thousand dollars, yet there's another forty thousand dollars out there.
But, but the, the issue is, the issue is, they want to drill down, but they don't want to read. They used to get after us because we didn't give them information in that little block that said, you know, and I think we've tried, you know, Steve and, and I mean, we tried very hard, I know Derek, when you were on the budget committee, we tried very hard telling them, if you, listen, put as little information in there as you want or as much information. We're encouraging much information because then it'll allow the budget committee to read your thoughts and your rationale behind it. And if not, then realize you may have to find those dollars somewhere else because, you know, you can't, you can't remember the, all the details on that. And, but that, you know, they, you know, well, they can, but they're blanket statements of, of without reading it and understanding it and asking you, I mean, you know, read what it says, break back to them because that's the, that's the, that's your explanation is what's, what's in the budget put there by the administrator of the school, so.
So they looked at, like I said, two seventy-two and five eighty as far as travel and conferences. And it's up like thirty-seven thousand dollars over last year. Yep, thirty-five thousand of that is for sped and for, Julie was explaining to us, getting like three or four people certified and going through the courses and that thing.
So Horton, Gilliam, Reading, Wilson, Reading, those specifications. We have, we have students who have, those are the appropriate resources to be in students' IEPs, but we don't have the people who, the coursework. And this is, this is a situation where we've been trying to hire people with it and the same with LD certification and EH certification. And, you know, the conversation with the board a few months ago is, we need to actually fund these upfront. And, and because we're having no luck hiring people who are bringing certifications with them, which will lead us at some point in time to a conversation about, so, will, since this is outside of the mandatory LEA funding, will the coursework come with a clause that requires someone to be with us or pay back?
Then Bill's concerned with several lines that are in the CBA that have to be in there. But the monies are for training, but the money is never spent, so.
I don't know about that. Well, he's indicated. Coursework reimbursement.
Yeah, that some of the lines are typically underspent, so he was wondering if.
So again, explain to him that it has to be there because it's in the CBA, he goes, I understand, he goes, but you don't spend it, he goes, no. We'll look for it elsewhere. So it almost like, to me, made him sound like, okay, you put it there, we're going to find it, take it away from somewhere else. Which isn't the right thing to do. Then, one other one, and I'll just bring it up only because Ray was nice enough to send, send me an article today after the discussion. The line where we put in an additional couple thousand dollars for recognition for Dr. Cochran to use throughout the schools because we felt what was there like twelve hundred, thirteen wasn't enough. And of course, they just wanted to know if we just like picked a number out of the air. Kind of rounded up the four thousand dollars, which sounded right. So Ray was nice enough to send me an article on retention and why people leave and why people stay and that type of thing, so. But I, I just hope going forward that they can take the dollar amounts that, from salaries and benefits that are in there and from transportation and kind of like backtrack those out, just take a look at that, the rest of the picture as far as, you know, what's in there for education and for buildings. I told, we haven't got the buildings yet, but I mean, there's, there's money's there and it's a big portion, but it's also buildings that, nothing's been done for a long time.
Well, I think, again, I, you know, I, I think that, that yourself, you guys need to take some copious notes. Break down, write down the quotes and have them ready because in February on the fourth, since that's what we see here, we need to stand up in front of them and read back their quotes and what they've said and ask the voters to change what they undid. And, and I think that the school board, I, I mean, I know that the, the town feels that way. That, you know, the, the, while the budget committee's job is to look at the budget, at some point in time, they need to realize that cuts they're making are impacting the assets of everybody. And I think we should not be afraid to question those.
And I mentioned that last night, I mean, our, our three buildings here are our biggest asset in the town.
Yeah.
And, I mean, they're, they're starting to fall apart and we need to do something about it. Just put it this way, the reaction to our budget was exactly what we thought it would be.
Oh, yeah. But then again, you can make it as sharp as, as tight and as sharp as you want, you get the same reaction, so, you know, what's the difference?
So we'll see what happens tomorrow night, it's like when they do their cuts on the first few budgets were presented. Unfortunately, Dr. Heon could not be there, so I'm going to just ask them, make sure we put off curriculum until she's there.
Actually, it's supposed to be a week later, so they shouldn't be voting any cuts till next Tuesday, I thought.
Is it next Tuesday?
Thought they, they gave them a week.
Maybe that's where it is, and it rotates, all right, so tomorrow's just the high school then.
Wow.
It was supposed to be, it was supposed to be high school and salaries and benefits. We pushed off salaries and benefits to.
Yeah, next Tuesday with LMS and GMS.
But GMS and LMS are pretty easy. They're like, they're like level funded.
That's why I put salaries and benefits over there.
I mean, they should be, they should be pretty easy. They are level funded.
So, it begins.
It's only over till for three weeks.
Yeah.
Or whatever.
Yep.
Michelle Gordon finally did respond and he is available on the.
The fourth.
That's it?
Fourth.
And the seventh. That's it. He's not available on the thirty-first.
I think we should still try to go to Saturday. Rather than, than Wednesday.
We'll have no alternate date.
The fourth.
Well, I mean, the, the alternate days that we're, we're planning at ten o'clock and if anything, we'll push it to two o'clock. And, you know, power up that generator, heat the building and clear the parking lot. We'll be here. We're in New Hampshire. We, we should not be afraid of snow.
Small town.
Buffalo even functioned, even though they had seven feet of snow, they still functioned. We should be able to function also. You should not be worried. I guess if we get a blizzard of whatever, we can always move it to later back in the day or whatever, but we ought to be able to go with the seventh and. The only person coming from out of town is Gordon.
And if he knows the storms, he knows the storms.
Send a truck for him.
We'll just tell him to come early, he can sleep in the school.
That's it. We'll make sure, we'll have a pot of coffee and a warm building for him.
I think we'd already discussed that Saturday was the best alternative anyway, correct?
I, I mean, I just know that when we did it on the weekday last week, last, last year, I think we did it last year. And that.
It was two years ago, I think.
Two years ago. It just didn't, it just was, just was a bigger issue and I, and I think we just need to, we can't, if you can't do the thirty-first and the town's okay doing the thirty-first and us doing the, the seventh, then, then that's, I think, that, that's the way we should go.
Yep. I agree.
So we'll do it for the seventh at ten AM. Okay.
Do you have a price for Article Three, Frank?
No, that was just there. Michelle was kind enough to put this together and we do not have a price for that yet. I was hoping to have it today, but it's just more of a marker. We kind of put this together as a draft for the board to see of, based on some of the discussions you've had in the past and obviously the board will need to make some decisions, but we have some time to do that. We figure outside by the seventeenth of December, we would like to have that direction and a vote by the board so we can pass it along at that time to the budget committee.
And is Article Five to increase, isn't that to increase the buildings and capital reserve from fifty thousand to a hundred thousand? Because it already at, we just put fifty. Because it already at, we just put fifty thousand dollars.
You wouldn't put increase, it's just basically to take fifty thou-
To take another fifty thousand.
It's, it's, regardless of what your balance would be, you're looking to take that fifty thousand. So again, we would need to have some more discussion on this once we get more clarity on some of the costs and where the board wants to go with, with the warrants. Uh, and we would, uh, you know, we've got the tenth and the seventeenth to finalize that.
Did you, remember we talked about, um, uh, moving everything under one trust? Did you guys talk to our trustees or the attorneys?
Uh, I can tell you from past experience, you cannot commingle trust funds for, for different purposes.
What if we got rid of these and converted it to that new, what if I could?
That, that.
It's not a trust fund, it's the.
Still not, that's a, that would be a separate trust fund, that, that the sweeping two and a half percent.
Yes, that.
That came out with a few years back. Again, you, you have to keep these funds separate because the voters have given you the authority to spend money for a specific purpose, so to commingle those funds.
Or we could take these and put them into the other one.
You could ask the voters.
No, DRA doesn't allow you to do it.
The RSE is a specific.
DRA doesn't allow you to commingle those funds.
Well, so, so.
You can.
Let's say you put money in X thing and, and for five years you didn't use it, but you knew you had something coming up.
You can ask the voters to dissolve that trust fund and to, and to reassign those funds, but you cannot simply just, again.
No, 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 that's what I'm saying, you could, yeah.
You can, but there's a process. You, you just, the school board doesn't have that authority, I guess is my response to it.
No, I wasn't thinking that we could do it. Like going there on TV, not making that recommendation.
I know you, Mr. York, you want to move that money, no.
Nah, 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 we can ask the voters.
It's, it's a worthy question of a response, but no, you cannot do it at this point.
So do we want to continue down this road, I guess, as a board of having separate trust funds, if we want to dissolve these and go to the two point five percent?
You know, it, the answer is no and yes. Because the, the, the key on that is, is as soon as we decide to go that way and we try to present the, the, the correct argument behind that, sometimes it's better than to beat your head against the brick wall, just do something they already know. And rather than do the program that's been set up to be used, because remember, they thought the whole financial world of the state was going to fall in and all the other towns, so the towns that voted it in have had no issues with the process. And we're trying to solve two or three different issues by creating different funds, which that one little fund would have created and would have been there with whatever the dollars were. And then at that point in time, once it was funded, we could begin to dissolve the trust funds that we already have and move that money back to the taxpayers. I mean, if, if you already have it funded over here, you don't need all these other trust funds. And, um, you know, so you could begin to dissolve and, and, and send that money back to the taxpayers to, to do what they want with it.
Under the two point five percent fund, correct me if I'm wrong, did we need to get approval from the budget committee to spend any of that money? There was a process there, if I remember correctly.
We still have to follow that process and it's, it's not as clean, it, the two and a half percent gave you the authority for emergency expenditures for any reason that was deemed in your terms an emergency.
Yeah.
Um, the, the problem with it is, and a lot of the districts attempted to keep their, the specialty reserve accounts, if you will, for, you know, special ed tuition and so on and so forth. Um, it didn't roll out well, so a lot of folks didn't understand, everybody rushed to put that two and a half onto the, onto the market. But you would still be required to hold a public hearing, um, on it, uh, if you wanted to expend money out of it, just as you would on the, on the special reserve.
Okay, so there's no approval process?
Uh, yeah, there is appro, yeah, you, again, you'd have to, if you want to spend money out of that fund, you'd have to hold a public hearing, part of a school board meeting is the way with that.
But you also, no, you, you still needed a vote of the budget.
It still needs to go to the budget committee as well.
And if they voted no, you could always go to the state to, to approve it.
Yeah, to quit out there, we're just saying, ask them to do it.
But here, we just have.
Here, we can just spend it if we want to, yeah. As long as it goes to the right.
Yeah, as long as it goes right, and a vote of, and a majority vote of the board.
Yeah. So there's that, there's benefit, that benefit there, I guess.
Any other questions on warrants and drafts?
So how much money, how much do we have in Article Six, do we already have right now in capital reserve for, uh, special services that we have?
One hundred and six thousand dollars.
Are you guys looking to add to that?
Uh, I had an interesting discussion about that. One of the things that was mentioned last night was that, you know, we, we, every year anticipate the worst happening with special education and really then give back a big chunk of, of money to the town and how unfortunate that is. At the same point in time, we could budget, I mean, it's kind of like what we did with, with, uh, athletic transportation. They used to put in the budget, if every team made the playoffs and went all the way to the finals, and so it was always underspent. And, but you could make a pretty good prediction about what it would be and it wasn't, you know, if, if, if you had a really great year, then you'd have to find a little bit of money. You had a really bad year with special education, you couldn't have to find a quarter of a million dollars. So with a hundred and six thousand dollar reserve fund, it's hard to say, well, let's, let's, you know, be optimistic that we'll have a good year or an okay year, all right? But if we have a bad year, we're gonna have to draw from regular programs to fund special education. If you could build up that reserve to a significantly larger money, uh, fund there, so that you said, well, let's budget for what we think is realistic and if we have, you know, two students move in who are out of district placements before they ever move in here, we have no option except to, to pay. So what would the minimum threshold of that be? Would it be three hundred thousand dollars for a district our size? Would it be four hundred thousand dollars? And then you could be a little bit more realistic, but right now, you know, like what we do with, with sped transportation, we don't know who else is going to the same schools every year, and so we budget as if we're sending the students and having to pay for the bus for the one student. And fortunately, every year we accrue some savings, but those savings aren't guaranteed and, you know, so there are risks to going ahead and saying, well, let's go, we, we talked about the timing of, of put a warrant article for at the end of, of, upon this time, we'll go for fifteen sixteen, that would say the first hundred and ninety-four thousand dollars of sped underspend in fifteen sixteen would go, roll over into the budget. And then you would, that would give you a hundred, that would give you three hundred thousand dollars as a sped reserve. Now you can then, and so instead of putting an extra whatever in case everything breaks bad into every year and then giving it back, set it aside as a sum, what would the appropriate sum to be and, you know, how do you get it in there within a reasonable amount of time?
So, again, I, I, I tend to agree with that thought process. I mean, I think the idea of, of building into your budget in anticipation of these worst-case scenarios every time does create that process of, 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 well, the questions you get every year, you know? You know, it's so rather than send a, send a budget in there that we think is fairly close and accurate to where we need to be, taking into consideration where you could look and say, okay, historically we've spent, you know, you know, without a student moving in, historically we spent three hundred thousand dollars with every year showing a five percent increase. So you do the five percent or whatever the increase is, and that's what you go with instead of saying, well, you know, the budget was four hundred thousand dollars and we sent a hundred thousand dollars back.
I just find it's ironic that, that our budget is significantly larger than the town budget, but the town budget, as Mr. Marquess points out, you know, has a capital reserve of almost a million dollars and ours is, uh, a hundred and six or a hundred and fifty-six right now.
Not a lot.
It just seems.
Yeah, the numbers would probably come in a little bit more accurately on a regular basis, but then you have that reserve so that when you do need it, which can have, you might need it in a moment.
I mean, to me, I, that makes perfect sense to me, it's, we just have to, you know.
Well, but it's, well, I mean, I, I mean, I'm hoping that that's the, would be the new mindset of the budget committee, but previously that hasn't been their, their process, has not been, I mean, they, they, you know, when we, we've talked about these things, I mean, it'll be interesting to see their votes, um, uh, on, on this, but it, it does allow us to, you know, have a sharper reference on, on the budget to be, you know, because again, there's only one place for, um, a special services correction to be made, and that's to everyday education, you know, or building maintenance or something like that not getting done. Um, uh, and, uh, it would be nice to know that you're going into that process and you could withstand a student coming in that's gonna cost you a hundred or a hundred and twenty thousand dollars for whatever the reasons may be.
It'd be interesting to see the extent to which the budget committee is open to some innovative and flexible ways to try and, and meet everyone's intended goals. So if, I mean, if there's an agreement between the two bodies, the board and the budget committee, that sped is used, the unused sped goes back to the town, well, could it be agreed that if we, if we cut, you know, X amount of dollars out of building and grounds, that, that money would be used for that?
For private agreements.
But, I mean, we do, I mean, it's more, it's really what we have now at this point in time.
We don't want to make any, any private agreements with the budget committee.
That brings us to revenue projections. You were provided with a cover memorandum and a spreadsheet showing the, um, revenue projections for fiscal year, school year fifteen sixteen. Just an overview on the memorandum, um, local, state, federal revenue for the most part. Take a look at a four-year average and you try to build that into your projection, very difficult to do, again, we're looking at, um, some time away and, and a lot of things can happen, especially on the state level. Uh, student and tuition, uh, activ, uh, tuition and student activities combined to one total reported in the report, that's where you'll see a higher, you'll see zero under, under student activities. That's been rolled up, that was, um, in the past, inappropriate, we reported on a student activity, it really needs to be in the tuition. Uh, other local revenue, there's a substantial drop there, as you've heard in the past, uh, that excludes some of those one-time events that we've had, specifically the LGC, Health Trust refund, uh, on the upside to the revenue projections. School, school building aid, even though we're retiring the debt obligation, uh, for Campbell High School, um, fiscal year two thousand and sixteen, we will still receive, uh, school building aid from the state, um, and that'll be the, the final payment in two thousand and sixteen that we'll receive. CAT aid, as you've heard in the past, uh, the state has not fully funded the responsibility under CAT aid, so we're taking seventy percent of what is the four-year average for CAT aid as a projection for next year, and we zero-funded unassigned fund balance. So the net effect of that is that, yeah, the general fund projection for two thousand and sixteen is approximately nine hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars less than, than this, this current fiscal year. The majority of that, again, is in the unassigned fund balance.
Where's the other, where's that three hundred thousand dollars coming from for disabilities program?
That's your Medicaid reimbursement. Oh, I'm sorry, which, the three hundred thousand? That's the combination of that and, and the federal fund programs up top is your, your IDEA grant, that's, that's grant, that's not the general fund.
It says revenue from federal sources.
Right, that's your IDEA grant.
But it hasn't been there before. Looks brand new.
No, 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 we just don't, we didn't, no, we didn't take a three-year, four-year average because it doesn't, that doesn't matter. It's, it's, it's whatever that we get approved under the federal grant IDEA, so you don't look at a four-year window in that.
So it could be less.
Could be more, could be less, you, you don't know, we don't know till we're already into the, to the school year. Grants aren't usually awarded until sometime, I believe, September, October of that current school year. And it doesn't impact the taxes, it's not a calculation as part of the local tax rate
Frank, I have a variance at the very bottom, fifteen versus sixteen. Um, it's about a nine hundred thousand dollar variance.
Mm-hmm.
And of that, almost eight hundred thousand is.
Is from the unassigned fund balance.
The unassigned fund balance.
And you can see that school building aid is reduced by almost ninety-five thousand there.
So, do you think this is the number when I go, like, so when we present our, our budget, we have to do the actual tax rate impact, are we gonna be using this number as?
Oh, boy.
We're in trouble. I was gonna say like a dollar fifty. Which, hey.
That is.
We look at changing that too, because it's really not, so say, what it's gonna do is compare la, current years to next years and that's gonna be the difference, but it really should be showing the difference between the default budget and.
That's part of it. The, being able to forecast the tax impact of anything right now is an exercise.
Yeah.
And we'll, we'll keep it.
We, last year we forecasted like twenty-seven cents, right? And it ended up being negative.
Right. Because again, the unassigned fund balance turned out to be, when I do the tax calculation, whereas my predecessors, I believe, utilized a two hundred thousand just as a benchmark, I, I use zero because my intention is the appropriations that were, were, um, provided to the district, we should spend on. That's what we said we need and we should spend it down, it's just a different philosophy. But, you know, you can see, eight hundred thousand of that nine hundred and thirty-seven.
Throws it off wildly.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, we could, build in, okay, we, we're gonna project.
But I mean, from a legal standpoint, instead of saying, this year's budget is twenty-one, twenty million dollars, our proposed budget is twenty-one million dollars, a million dollars is, what, a dollar and a tag, nine, ninety cents or something on the tax rate, right? So this won't cost ninety cents, when in reality, the difference between the default budget and the operating budget are a hundred thousand dollars, so if it passes, it's really only a ten cent difference. Like, can we legally show it that way instead?
You can, you can show the projected impacts of your, of your default budget, sure you can.
Okay, maybe we should do that then, because I think that's a more accurate representation.
I agree.
If memory serves me, I think we may have done that last year, I'm not sure.
I think last year we showed like thirty-two cents.
I think we talked about doing it, whether or not we ended up.
Talking about doing it, yeah.
But I, I, I think we did talk about doing it, you can do it. You, you can show the tax, the, the new I R S A on tax impact and disclosure of that that came out of DRA, you, you could show tax impact of anything that has an impact on the general fund.
Okay.
And again, it's only a projection, it's, it's.
So you say, if you vote yes for this, it costs thirty-five cents, if you don't know, it still costs thirty-five.
Like you say, our projections last year were so far off because we didn't anticipate, uh, the eight hundred thousand dollar unassigned fund balance.
If we go down to the last three lines, education grant, state education tax and unassigned fund balance. This seven eighty-eight, shouldn't that also be zero?
I don't understand any question.
He's projecting zero this year. Last year we returned seven hundred and eighty-eight thousand, this year he's projecting zero.
Yeah, but that would've been fourteen. It wouldn't be fifteen, so I, I don't understand.
Yes, it is, it, it's, it is fifteen.
It's the fourteen, fifteen budget, right?
Mm-hmm. Okay. And I know we always say returning it to like we write a check, but again, as you can see here, it uses offset, right.
Um, could we, instead of using zero, just use five-year average? Be fair, we can do a five-year average.
You can, but.
The budget committee loves five-year averages.
I, I, oh, I know that. You know, you can, but it's, it's from an accounting perspective, you know, seven eighty-eight was, one-time occurrence was what? So to use an average with knowingly.
It's better than zero.
Well, I mean, if you look back three years, there was another seven seventy-two, so.
Because what you're saying is going, we're not even through the end of the fiscal year and you're already saying, we're gonna have unassigned fund balance.
Right.
And if you wanna do that as a board, you can.
Well, let me ask you a question.
If you wanna do that as a board, you can.
Wait a minute, a lot of that seven eighty-eight, let's be truthful, a lot of that seven eighty-eight was unanticipated income. And in all of those lines across there, right, all of those are not money not spent. Eighty percent of it is unanticipated income that came to the district. Okay, so that's, that is a fair representation.
I, I agree with that.
Well, I can tell you it was, because I know all those numbers and I can guarantee you that every one of those numbers is spent within a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars of the bottom line. So if we return three hundred and seventy thousand dollars in, in whatever that year was, two thousand and eleven.
Most of it was anticipated.
Two hundred and fifty thousand of it was unanticipated income, so.
If that's what you want to say.
Well, I know it's true, Frank, I've sat in the rooms and we've had the discussion, so I think that's, that it, you know, I don't wanna make you have to go back through the process of five years to, to, to have that discussion, but a lot of that money has been unanticipated income, whether it be from the health, health programs and stuff like that, or Medicare grants and stuff. or Medicare grants and stuff like that where the money was higher than anticipated. I don't think most of that money was money where we didn't spend.
I don't think you want to budget unanticipated revenue.
If it's higher than anticipated, that's one category. If it's unanticipated, that's another category.
Right. And I don't think you want to, like what Frank was saying, I don't think you want to take a five-year average and put it in there.
But what I'm saying is the 788.
Yeah, but then the town looks, the town looks at it and says, wow, you already have yourself a little bonus chip here of half a million dollars.
No, we don't, because we can't touch the unanticipated income.
Yeah.
Whether it comes in higher or not, if our revenue, if our budget is 20 million dollars, if for whatever reason we get 21 million dollars, we can't touch a million of it. We can't do anything with it. Okay, it's going, it's going to go back to the taxpayer.
It's that number right there.
And I believe in that 788, because I believe you, you, you guys showed us documentation in that, that you guys spent that down to about 70,000 dollars in your budget this year. You had about 70 left. At least that's what you, you told us. So that means 700,000 of that was unanticipated income. Where it came from, I don't know where it came from, but, but that's.
Well, you do know where it came from, because I reported that out to you multiple occasions.
I do, but I don't know it off the top of my head.
Okay, well, I, I did report that out on a multiple occasion.
I'm not saying you did.
And again, unassigned, unassigned fund balance, you're saying unanticipated, the LGC refund, that's unanticipated. Medicaid, Medicaid distribution reimbursement of expenses, that's under-projected versus unanticipated. So we already took into consideration an increase in Medicaid distribution based on the four-year average. But again, not knowing the specifics of the population of Medicaid is very difficult to do that. We already have used the four-year. And it seems like the trend has been that the Medicaid has come in higher. But again, that's under-projected versus unanticipated. There's a difference.
The external caveat as well, that there was an external group that was advocating to parents who were eligible, who were, had been traditionally claimed in our Medicaid reimbursement, indicating to them that it was not a wise thing to do to sign the form that would allow us to do that, that it might somehow be a negative thing for them. So we had to be even more cautious last year because there was, there was an unknown impact of, of that particular group, so.
I think what, I mean, we could choose what to do going forward, but I think what Steve always did was, I think he always put 200 in that number, because he always, he always aimed to return 200,000 dollars.
Right.
And assumed with unanticipated revenues, it was going to be around there. So for budgetary reasons and projections, I think this, I think he always plugged 200,000. I could be wrong though.
He did.
He did. But at the same point in time, as Mr. Burke points out, the Budget Committee will look at that and say, well, you must have 200,000 extra in your budget, so let's cut it.
I'd rather put a negative number than if we want to put a number.
No, because I mean, all that number does, all that number does is affect that, that tax impact number. That's all that number does. Am I correct?
It, what, it, it lowers the impact.
It lowers the impact.
In the sense that there's money already in the bank account.
Which is already, I don't think it's a bogus number, but it's a, it's a, you know.
It is.
You're asking for me to make an opinion on numbers, okay? And from a, from the BA position, you've already said that the projected tax impact in itself has, has little confidence load.
Yeah.
Now you're saying we throw another 200,000 at that to lower the level of confidence that we're giving for the tax.
I guess I'd argue that 200,000 is more likely than zero, based upon.
If that's what you, if I'm directed by the board, I would put two, you, you give me a number and I'll put it in.
I like zero.
We don't have to make a decision tonight, do we? We have probably till like February, the January, or something.
I can ask the Budget Committee tomorrow, what would they think?
The, the Budget Committee has been asking for this and that's why in the CC we will provide them. They asked when they will receive it. We told them as soon as the board receives it, they will receive it shortly thereafter.
I can tell you if the Budget Committee sees that negative 937,000 dollars, there's going to be a lot of cuts tomorrow.
I think prior to this number, there's going to be a lot of cuts.
Yeah, there's going to be even more, probably 937,000 more.
Yeah, but they also realize that three quarters of a million was unanticipated and that was presented to them months ago and the reasoning behind it. I mean, that not, that's why that number is so skewed really. I mean, you take that.
What, the, the 788 skews the nine?
Yeah.
Yeah, but that, I mean, then the 788, that's a real number though. I mean, that, we're not going to return that again because a lot of that was LGC refund, right? Which isn't going to happen again. That was a one-time.
LGC refund and we under-projected on the, on the Medicaid reimbursement?
Yeah.
But again, there's a push, as Dr. Cochran said, there's a push afloat to not only the farmers and the parents saying that they can get the money back, but there's also raising the bar of what is actually reimbursable under Medicaid. So that's a never-changing. That's like the catastrophic gate. How do you know? Will, will we get 100% of whatever we're eligible for our expenditures? The trend has been around 70%. So we're, we're looking at that. Again, emphasizing that this is an exercise just to put a, a revenue projection on a lot is going to happen between now and the next eight months. I mean, if you think about it, the DRA gives us until next September to restate our revenue projections that we're trying to put together now. And that's September in the current fiscal year.
Any other discussion? Not the default budget discussion.
Just on a timeline on the default budget that you will have in your packet for next week, a first draft of the default, that'll be a spreadsheet and, and any notes applicable. We will follow the same guidelines, basically that the board had provided to us last year by example. And the utilities, we, we just, we funded that at the same level. We didn't build any inflationary discount to that. So we'll follow some pretty much the same guidelines that you provided to, to me last year in the development of the default budget.
Is there a finally ready touchdown, right?
If we just put that with the other stuff, then.
Mr. Chair, I'm okay with moving job descriptions to next week.
Second that. Do you want to move the policies? That's fine too.
The what?
The policies.
Because aren't the policies tied into the job descriptions?
Yeah, except for the last one. So if we're doing two other policies, you may as well move that one to the next one as well. That's what we'll do. Bring, it brings us down to the manifest.
Do you have three signatures?
Yeah. Couldn't wait for you. Couldn't wait for you. Any questions on the manifest? Public input? Bring us to non-public. Dismissal, promotion, or compensation of any public employee, or the disciplining of such employee, or the investigation of any changes against, charges against him. Unless the employee affected one has a right to a meeting and two, requests that the meeting be open, in which case the request shall be granted. B, the hiring of any person as a public employee. See matters which, if discussed in public, would likely affect adversely the reputation of any person other than a member of the body or agency itself unless such a person requests an open meeting.
So may.